The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order the December 8 quasi judicial meeting, and at this time I'd ask you to join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed motion carries unanimously. Our first quasi judicial public hearing is for Spring Arbor of Cary. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during the public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson who is on my right. We will pause just a moment to allow those individuals who would like to speak at this public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. I'm going to pause from saying anything or doing anything during this time until this has been completed. This time I'll ask council members if they've had any site visits, ex parte communications, financial relationships, special knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left with Mr. Yerha.
I have not, sir.
Ms. Bush?
I have not.
Ms. France?
Nope.
I have not.
I have not.
Ms. Robinson?
I have not. So Mayor, after seven years of having no contacts with citizens for any quasi judicial meeting, I had two contacts this week. I had one on December 2nd. Do you need to know the citizen's name?
If you have it, I think.
Okay. Diane, I've never met her. Diane Bauris, B-A-U-R-E-I-S, on December 2nd, wanting to touch base with me about an issue we're going to talk about on Monday night concerning her parents. I don't even know which of these three cases it might have been. I emailed her and said, "I can't speak about this, it's quasi judicial." I copied Sherry. Sherry sent her the staff member's name that she could contact. So that's the first thing to disclose. The second was, a couple of days later, I got an email from a gentleman whose name I'm not going to be able to find here now, who wanted to talk, no, it was a woman, Kim Rogers, and she wanted to talk to me about the third case because she lives in that neighborhood. And I once again told her I couldn't talk about it, it was quasi judicial, and directed her, at that point I knew the staff member, and I directed her to the staff member, and that's been the extent of my contact.
Very good. If anyone has an objection of any council member participating, based on what you've heard, I would invite you to the podium at this time. Seeing no one, we'll continue, and I'll open up the quasi judicial hearing and call on Mr. Hales of our staff to present the side. Mr. Hales?
Thank you, Council. As you indicated, the first hearing on tonight's agenda is a request by Jerry Turner and Associates on behalf of the developer and property owners for development of assisted living facility located at 1695 Kildare Farm Road in Cary. Site is located on the east side of Kildare Farm Road, immediately north of the U.S. Highway 164 Bridge. It's located, bounded on the north by Wimbledon subdivision, and on the east by Waltonwood Cary Assisted Living or Life Care Community. The roads, Kildare Farm Road and Highway 1 and 64, define the western and southern boundaries of the site. It is located along an existing C-Trans fixed route that runs north-south along Kildare Farm Road. There are some stream buffers and floodways that impact this property, however, they do not impact this 10-acre portion which is under consideration tonight. They will be more impactful to the single-family portion of the PDD which will become in foreview in future times. Property is currently zoned PDD major. Council saw this last year in June. It was a Spring Arbor, Keesler Track PDD. Spring Arbor PDD includes this assisted living site and single-family houses that wrap the assisted living on the northern and eastern sides. Property is predominantly wooded. There was existing residence and associated agricultural uses that occupy the western portion of the site, which actually takes up a large portion of the 10 acres that are under consideration this evening. The proposed site, as you can see, occupies the southwestern corner of the site. Zoom in a little bit, the blue areas are buildings on the site surrounded by circulation and parking lots. Two stormwater BNP's are located on the eastern end of the site as the site slopes away from Kildare Farm Road toward the creeks you saw earlier. They are proposing a private drive connecting a new public street which will serve the future single-family portion of the site on the northern end, and a full-service access on the Kildare Farm Road at the southern end just north of the bridge. Proposed architecture is very residential in character with steep pitch roofs, asphalt shingle with siding and brick. As mentioned in the staff report, there are several minor modifications associated with this, the first being a reduction of thoroughfare corridor buffer, second being some of the architectural standards need to be modified due to the residential character of their architecture. All the three subsets there are removal of champion trees, and they are proposing a payment in lieu for the median in Kildare Farm Road. As mentioned before, they are requesting a thoroughfare corridor buffer reduction. The ordinance requires a 100-foot thoroughfare corridor buffer along the highway itself. There is no interchange at Kildare Farm Road, so this would not be the smaller 50-foot. The applicant is requesting a reduction from that 100-foot thoroughfare corridor buffer to a 50-foot thoroughfare corridor buffer for slightly more than 800 feet along the entire length of their project frontage. Second minor alteration is a, the minor modification is a modification of the town's architectural standards, in particular the articulation standard which deals with the proportion of base body and cap of the building. It only comes into play for the two larger sections at either end, and it's because of the pitch of the roof and the narrowness of the segment, they are slightly outside of the town's requirements. The third deals of champion trees. There were 14 trees identified in the tree survey that were potential champion trees. Two of those were unhealthy and were disqualified due to that. They are saving eight of the remaining 12, I mean, they're removing eight of the remaining 12 and saving four, shown here in yellow. And then Kildare Farm Road is called by the comprehensive transportation plan to be a four-lane median divided facility. Because the property on the western side of Kildare Farm Road has yet to be developed, it hasn't been widened to its full cross-section and therefore the provision of the median at this time, they're requesting a payment in lieu since they could not provide the full 18-foot median due to the current dimensions. That concludes staff's initial presentation. Following the applicant's presentation, any other interested speakers will be back to provide a little professional insight into the requested modifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. At this time, I'll call in the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence that supported the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant and property owners. Here with me tonight is Mr. Bo Cook of HH Hunt. They are the developers, are the proposed developers of this site. Also here is Willie Hood of Jerry Turner and Associates, who's the landscape architect for this development. And finally, Mr. Bill Daniel with Bill Daniel and Associates is the project engineer. I want to touch briefly on what the forecast of the evidence will be. Before I do, I just want to note, and you'll hear it from Mr. Cook, HH Hunt is very excited about this site. You know, they've been working on this development concept for an extended period of time. An assisted living facility at this location is really kind of one of those right use, right location type concepts. It's got tremendous access to medical facilities across the street, easy response times for emergency service vehicles and things of that nature. So it is, it's tough to find a better location for this type of use. I think as Mr. Cook will testify to, from their perspective, their future residents will likely have family in the area. They view the proximity to Kildare Farm, the access on to Kildare Farm as another asset to this type of use in this location. As you will hear from our testimony, we believe that the use is warranted pursuant to the terms of the land development ordinance, including the minor modifications. I want to touch briefly on two of the minor modifications, just to kind of give you my perspective as the applicant's counsel on what the justification for those minor modifications is. The thoroughfare corridor buffer reduction is something that I know is not a minor modification that the town council takes lightly. We have worked on one previously, or I have, just north and east of this site, the walted wood assisted living facility. And if you recall, that was a facility that was built, and after the fact, they realized they didn't have sufficient parking, so they requested a thoroughfare corridor buffer to increase the parking. The site that's before you tonight is overparked, based upon the town's standards for parking for this type of use. And the reason why they're overparked is they don't want to have to come back after the fact and realize they haven't provided sufficient parking. So part of the justification that we believe warrants the reduction of the thoroughfare corridor buffer is that basically all of the improvements in that area that's being impacted consist of a drive aisle and parking. And I think that is an important point from you all's perspective. There are no building improvements located within the portion of the thoroughfare corridor buffer that's being impacted, so the building's not getting any closer to the 64 thoroughfare. And as part of that, and as you'll hear from Mr. Cook, the reason why that buffer is being impacted is essentially because there have been commitments made as part of the zoning case with respect to buffering of the future residential, as against the Wimbledon property, that shifts everything to the east. I mean, basically, there were commitments made with respect to minimum lot sizes, as well as a buffer provided from Wimbledon to the future residential that has an, that essentially results in everything being shifted south and east. In addition, as you'll hear from Mr. Cook, this site is heavily riddled with trees, and the aerial painted that picture pretty well. And I don't know if I can make my way back to, Kevin's the master of the, look at that. There's a lot of trees. And there are a lot of trees that meet the town's ordinances for champion tree regulation. And what the, in order to fit any use on this site, trees were going to be impacted, and you'll hear that from Mr. Cook as well as from Mr. Hood. In order for any use to be put on this site, some, especially a use of this nature, you know, a retired assisted living facility that has a fairly broad footprint, the combination of topography and the trees make locating anything on there virtually impossible. So what the developer had to do was through the development process, unfortunately, pick winners and losers, recognizing they couldn't save all of the trees on the site. They tried to make an educated decision about which trees were most important, and they believe they have done so, and they've balanced the site in a fashion that folks will be proud of. The trees that are very visible from Kildare Farm Road, which if you've driven by there, you've seen those trees, those are the trees that are being saved. There's an open space area that's being saved. And that relates to that thoroughfare corridor buffer reduction. In order to save those trees, essentially pick the winning trees as part of this site, the improvements are being shifted further south. So with respect to the thoroughfare corridor buffer, again, it's a tough site to develop anything on, and in order to do anything on the site, trees are going to be impacted, and the thoroughfare corridor buffer is going to be impacted as well. With that, I'll call my first witness, Mr. Bo Cook of HH Hunt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Bo Cook, also known as William R. Cook Jr., but I do go by Bo. I was sworn in as William. So to give you a little introduction as far as why I believe I'm an expert witness, I work for HH Hunt. I've been working for them over 26 years. I've had 35 years of development experience. I've been involved with every assisted living that HH Hunt has developed over the years. I've been heavily involved in the design of each one of those, the site placement, so I have a very thorough knowledge of assisted livings and feel like that I can be an expert witness in this hearing. I have an education background. I'm a graduate of Virginia Tech with a BS in finance. So first of all, I just want to give you a plan summary. Jason touched on some of it, but I do want to kind of emphasize some of the more important aspects of our plan. When we look for an assisted living site, there's two things that we primarily look for. The first and foremost with all of the families of our future residents is medical facilities. Obviously, we're right diagonally across US-1, and we feel like that that's a good, I guess, source of future medical needs. It's a short distance. What you'll find is a lot of the residents will have physicians in that area, or they will be associated one with one when they move into a Spring Arbor. The second thing that we like to do is to locate in, or in some cases, in a residential atmosphere, because we feel like this is, this is a home. So we want to make sure that, you know, as our families come and go, visitors come and visit, that the atmosphere is more residential than institutional. All of our facilities that we own have these two things in common, so we felt like that this site was an excellent site for this Spring Arbor of Cary. This parcel consists of 10 acres of a larger 26-acre parcel that the council may recall of, came in as a Spring Arbor, a PDD that was voted on in June of 2014. Just to kind of give you a little summary of that, which Jason touched on, but is important, is that this came in as the assisted living site and a residential subdivision site. We feel like that these two uses have the minimal impact on a lot of things, one being traffic. We have a low traffic generation of operation with the assisted living, and coupled with the subdivision portion that was approved, the 35 lots, you'll be hard-pressed to have a lower traffic impact than those two uses. With this PDD, it was approved for the 35 residential units and a maximum of 90,000 square foot assisted living and 80 beds. This is what we are bringing forth. I would like to mention the fact that when we did get our rezoning back in June, that I actually brought up the issue of being site-specific. This is exactly the same site and layout that was presented at that meeting, and one of the reasons that's important is the fact that that's what we shared with the neighbors of Wimbledon. And we feel like that we are carrying forward exactly what we talked about in that meeting, the meetings with the neighbors, as well as what came to you in the rezoning last summer. We actually have designed the assisted living to be a little bit smaller than the maximum square footage. One thing I think that Jason did mention that I think is important, and what we've learned over 25 years of developing assisted livings is sometimes local jurisdictions don't really understand the traffic flow of an assisted living. What we like to do is we like to take into account the traffic that we actually have and is generated on the days that aren't normal. So we'll have functions throughout the year, monthly, where we have visitors come in. So we want to make sure that they have a safe place to park, and they don't have to go park in the neighborhood and kind of disrupt the flow in other areas. So that's the reason why we're, what I think Jason mentioned, overparked. But it's very important to provide that upfront, so that's why you see as many parking spaces as you do. One thing that we did in talking to the neighbors at Wimbledon, one of their concerns was is that they didn't want the service area to be anywhere near their view. And what we did is, I think you can see, I don't know if this thing will work, but basically our service area to the facility is right in here. So what we tried to do is to, on this side where the neighborhood will have a glimpse through the future subdivision, would be a nice setting, it's a park-like setting that you look through and you see a nice building with a nice facade and landscaping as well. So we do feel like that we have honored what we agreed to do with the subdivision Wimbledon, and so we're moving ahead with that. We do have two entrances. Basically, the primary entrance is, I think, is where, is shown right here. Secondary, as has been mentioned, is over here. We have the internal loop around the building, which provides a good means for the parking located on the opposite side, but also for the fire and emergency services. So we do meet the access that's required. Stormwater is shown, is back at the lower portion of the site. We have taken into consideration what may happen back here with this subdivision, so we've tried to make it such that any house lots that might back up to that would not have an adverse view out the back of their house. One of the things that I think that was mentioned by Jason that really caused the site and the building to be laid out is one of our agreements with the Wimbledon neighborhood was that we had a 30-foot buffer along the houses that existed along the common property line. According to the town ordinances, we were only required to have a 20-foot buffer. We are requiring, or we have agreed to, and will have a 30-foot buffer whenever the subdivision comes in. So with that, the extra 10 feet, and in this site, every foot counts to try to make it work out. We have a 30-foot opaque buffer along the property line, I guess it's this northern property line that would be common with the new subdivision. So that's a few extra feet there. We've tried to save as many of the large trees, and I think when Jason mentioned that, you know, the ones that people see from Kildare Farms, to be honest, that's what I considered to be a champion tree until I got into the details of the Cary Champion Tree Ordinance. But what we've tried to do is to create a little park setting right here, so the people that are coming and going along Kildare Farm, when they look over here, they see a nice, pleasant type of landscape that resembles a little park setting. We have a little gazebo there. So with this site plan, we're trying to preserve some of that, the environmental features that exist on the site. So basically, when you take into account all the 10-foot type things, the fact that we're trying to create the misses where staff would park as well, so the parking up front and some of this over here would be some of the, for visitors during the day, we would direct our staff to kind of utilize these parking spaces over here. So the thoroughfare buffer is really being encroached for reasons that are just necessary to make the whole plan work out. So it's not like we wanted to do it, but it's just, given what we have left to work with, it just, it happened. So basically, we are seeking the modification and reduction along the thoroughfare, and as I think Kevin mentioned earlier, the, it's a 50% reduction. So I think I'll mention the fact with the neighbors. I do believe that the reduction in the thoroughfare buffer kind of advances and purposes the ordinance in kind of the following ways. Encroaching into the buffer allows for preservation of the four trees that I'd mentioned. I think I mentioned a lot of this, but the resulting open space and thoroughfare buffer provides a superior open space amenity for the site and community. One half of the buffer, I think you can see it here, is open now, so we'll actually be adding to that to create the buffer that's not there, and we'll actually augment the trees and the landscape and that's along the existing one. We will be providing a planning plan for revegetation, and basically it's the one that the staff has recommended. And I think after it's actually developed, what will be left is just a nice view from Kildare Farm Road, as well as the revegetation along here will actually help screen this, the assisted living from the US-164. So basically, I believe that the reduction is justified pursuant to the standards of the, contained within the LOI, or LDO, sorry. And I think is, you know, what I'd mentioned before is that the parking is one of the big issues. So we just don't want, you know, to come back to you and ask for more parking. We want to make sure we have what's there when we start. The modification of the articulation standards contained within the LDO, I don't know if I can get back. As you can see, this design of the building actually started to occur in 2005. We were working on a building down in Williamsburg, Virginia, and good or bad, we had a architectural review board that we actually had to go before and get their approval. Williamsburg, Virginia is heavily influenced by Colonial Williamsburg, and actually have many, or several, members of the Colonial Foundation on the architectural review board. And we had a lot of conversations. We had a lot of conversation and discussion with them, and basically what, they came back as part of a recommendation and kind of really worked towards what we were after, is to actually try to make the building appear that it's more than one. I understand completely the ordinance and the 50% body rule, but really, that's geared towards commercial, and we feel like we're residential. And basically, where this actual design came from is actually kind of replicates a, you know, story and a half-type structure, although in this one, there's nothing, there's no living quarters or living space on this upper level. But it's actually, and we were directed to go to a specific house in Colonial Williamsburg to actually figure out how to design it. So that's where it came from. We think it fits well. We think that the, breaking the elevation up, it's hard to see in a 2D drawing, but in actual 3D and actually in person, this whole facade looks very good and actually will be an addition to Kildare Farm Road. So we understand where the ordinance is trying to go, but we just feel like that what we presented fits better in this setting with the residential character that we're trying to preserve. I believe that the hardship, which is really not the result of our actions with our design, but it just relates better to trying to create something that everybody wants. So that's what we feel is important, and it will be viewed by everyone. So we just feel like it's a good design, and it fits well, given the constraints that we have and what we're trying to do. The final issue that I'm addressing is the payment in lieu of Kildare Farm Road median. This plan includes a request for a payment in lieu of construction requirements. I think Kevin also mentioned that. So basically, currently, it's a five-lane section. The ultimate roadway section specifies a median divided roadway. We're in favor of that. We're glad to participate and offer the payment in lieu. So I think that concludes what I am going to speak to. I think Jason's coming back.
Thanks, Bo. Mr. Mayor, at this time, we'll call Mr. Willie Hood of Jerry Turner Associates to discuss champion tree removal, as well as the ordinance's first three requirements under the site
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Willie Hood. I'm a North Carolina Registered Landscape Architect, and I've been working with Jerry Turner and Associates since 1976. And since 1983, I've been a principal and vice president of the firm. During this time, which we have completed over 4,000 projects of landscape architecture, including site design, land planning, and planned unit developments. In fact, we've done over two dozen planned unit developments in Cary and over 400 projects in Cary. All told, I have a BS degree in conservation from NC State University and a Bachelor of Environmental Design in Landscape Architecture, also from NC State University. And my role in the project was to do the basic layout and the landscape plans. I'd like to talk right now about champion tree removal. We have requested a waiver from the town's Champion Tree Regulations, Section 7.2.5 of the LDO, and that were recently amended by the town council. And per the terms of the revised LDO, they provide, the proposed development that we are offering seeks to lose eight champion trees and, but keep and or preserve four healthy champion trees. As can be seen in the materials that were submitted with the plan, there are several champion trees scattered throughout the site, and they're evenly dispersed through the site, so that placing any use on the site virtually will impact all the trees. So as a result, we had to fit the proposed facility on the site and then determine which trees we thought were the most important to save and concentrate our efforts toward those trees. With that in mind, there are three very large willow oaks at the front of the site, along Kildare Farm Road, and you can see them up there where that number one is. There's also a fourth tree, another willow oak tree, that is behind them. So there's a total of four very nice champion trees. These trees were grown in lawn area where there was fertilizer and there was water, and so these are very well-formed trees, not like a lot of trees in the woods that have fought for competition and are spindly, even though they're large. So these are nice trees. And these were also the most visible trees from Kildare Farm Road, so we thought that the community would appreciate the savings of these trees more than some that were back in the woods that they had never seen. Also, the topography of the site presents significant challenges to using the property. It follows about 27 feet from front to back, and to meet all the ordinances, including the ADA requirements, significant grading does have to take place. It's not a lot of grading, but it's a little bit of grading over the entire site to accomplish this site. So based upon the existing site constraints, including the proposed use of the property and the environmental features, we feel that the proposal that we have, the requested modification, is the least deviation that we could have in order to meet the ordinances. And I believe that this minor modification is justified pursuant to the standards of Section 3.19.1 of the LDO. That concludes my talk about the champion trees. And I'd like us to turn now to the approval criteria that's in Section 3.9.2i of the LDO. And the first criteria under these site approval standards states that with approval of the requests for minor modification, the plan complies with all applicable requirements of this ordinance, including the development and design ordinances of Chapter 7 and 8, as well as the dedication and improvements provision of Chapter 8, as well as all applicable town specifications. Our response to this is that the plan complies with all applicable town ordinances or seeks allowable modifications that are in keeping with the intent of the ordinances, and we believe this to be true. The plan also complies with the approved Plan Development District, or the PDD overlay zoning provisions that you all approved earlier this year. And installation of all required infrastructure to town standards and specifications is provided for with this plan. And finally, as indicated on the proposed plan and other materials submitted, the improvements associated with the plan otherwise have been designed in compliance with the LDO. The second of these criteria states, "The plan adequately protects other property or residential uses located on the same property from the potential adverse effects of the proposed development." Our response is, "There are no residential uses planned on this portion of the property other than the assisted living facility. And the proposed development is well buffered from existing adjacent residential properties by a future single-family neighborhood, two major thoroughfares, and an extensive stream buffer and open space tract to the rear of the property." And finally, "The plan provides internal buffering consistent with the previously approved Spring Arbor Plan Development District." The third of these criteria states, "The plan provides harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties." And our response there is, "The plan for the assisted living community is in harmony with the surrounding residential and office-owned properties. There is no negative impact on schools, traffic, property values, crime rate, or any of those factors. The architectural style is in keeping with the adjacent residential uses, which has been demonstrated already, and the future residential uses to be developed within the remainder of the Spring Arbor PDD will provide additional buffering and transitions to the Wimbledon neighborhood." That concludes my portion.
Thank you, Willie. Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'll call Mr. Bill Daniel with Bill Daniel and Associates to provide testimony as to the final three criteria for approval of the site plan.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Bill Daniel with William G. Daniel and Associates. In a former life, long, long ago, I was the town's first town engineer for eight years. Left that position to start William G. Daniel and Associates in 1980, and since then, I've been president of that firm, and we've enjoyed working in Cary and are very proud of the community. I have a BS in civil engineering from North Carolina State, and I'm a registered professional engineer in North Carolina. My role in the project was, or the role of my firm in this project, was to provide engineering design services and plan preparation services to design and produce plans depicting the site improvements, the infrastructure, and the utilities, drainage, that sort of thing. Basically, support services in order to implement the layout that Willie provided to us. With regard to those plans, they were prepared, consistent with the town's development ordinances and design standards. That is probably evidenced by the review and the responses by the town staff, but I certify that is the case. I'd like to specifically address the three approval criteria, the final three approval criteria, and this will be fairly brief. The first is that the plan provides safe conditions for pedestrians or motorists and prevents a dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicular ways. As I stated, the plan complies with the town standards, and that includes town standards and specifications for design of the parking lots, the drives, radii, connections to thoroughfares, and the like. The plan provides future access to the future development of the residential. There are two stubs to that undeveloped property. Those will be via public streets, so the connections are provided for for the future. The vehicular and pedestrian plans have been reviewed thoroughly by the town staff, and all access issues and street improvements have been approved by the town. That includes improvements along Kildare Farm Road, two connections to Kildare Farm Road, and dedication of right-of-way. Any improvements associated with Kildare Farm Road, in addition to having, to be approved and reviewed by the town staff, they also have to be reviewed and approved by NC DOT, which of course they will be, and encroachment permits and driveway permits issued by NC The pedestrian circulation system, I would like to draw particular attention to because that was given a very high priority in the design process. As you can see from the plan, that you, the walks are not exactly highlighted, but you can, you can spot them on this plan. In addition to the 1,000 feet of walk abutting Kildare Farm Road, the public sidewalk along Kildare Farm Road, there are over 3,000 linear feet of walkways on this site plan. And those walkways are routed through the grounds of the assisted living facility and then connect from those grounds and those walkway systems to the passive amenity that has been alluded to with the trees and the gazebo, and two connections to the future residential. That pedestrian system has been laid out in such a way so as to minimize the conflict points with the vehicular routes. If you'll notice, there's a complete loop on the interior of the improvements without ever crossing a driveway. You can walk all the way around this facility and access any of the entrances of the facility without even crossing over a driveway. Then there are, of course, crossings of the driveway, which allow you to migrate elsewhere on the site and to connect to the pedestrian system that will go anywhere in Cary and through the future residential area. I just think it's well-done, and I think it will serve a very valuable function in the future. The second criteria is that the plan provides safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site. That's certainly the case here. There are two access points that serve the site. One is full service right in front of the facility. The other is a right-in, right-out from Kildare Farm Road that will provide access, that will interconnect with the drive that circles around the proposed facility. The plan, the layout of the plan provides not only excellent access from Kildare Farm Road, but allows emergency service vehicles to drive entirely around the building, which is certainly a big safety issue. I think that criteria is fully met and with no doubt about it. Finally, the plan provides mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project. The cross-section of Kildare Farm Road was previously mentioned by Bo, and that roadway section is incorporated into the site plan. There's additional right-of-way dedicated, and there is widening, both by the developer. The developer's dedicating the right-of-way and constructing the roadway to the ultimate section. As stated, there's a payment in lieu for the median section because we can't construct that median section since the other side of the road has not been widened out. Otherwise, we'd actually be reducing the capacity, which is sort of counterproductive. Those contributions for transportation more than mitigate the expected traffic generation. The traffic generation for this site is extremely low. At the time of rezoning, we didn't have to do a traffic impact analysis because the traffic volumes are so low. In fact, we were under the 50 threshold. 50 was in effect at that time, but in fact, we're under 20 for peak hours. This use is just, for that reason and others, I think, is very nearly the ideal use for this section of Kildare Farm Road with the concern that's been expressed for traffic in the past, and I think this plan addresses it very well. Be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we have no further witnesses to call. I do want to reiterate that with respect to the two significant, what I believe to be the two significant minor modification requests, the thoroughfare corridor buffer and the trees, the development team has done everything within their power in order to fit this type of use on this piece of property, recognizing that it's a tough site. It is a tough site. So we believe that the evidence that you all have received satisfies the ordinance requirements for approval of the site plan, and we respectfully request approval of the same. We're here to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll invite other speakers who have been sworn in and would like to speak in support of this application to approach the podium one at a time. Seeing no one, we'll move on. Cross-examination of the witnesses who have testified in support of their requests. I want to invite a cross-examination at this time. Seeing no one, continue to move. We now open the public hearing, we now open the hearing to those who are opposed to this request. Is there anyone opposed to this request? None. I'll call on town staff for any testimony they wish to add. Mr. Hales?
Thank you again, council, and I'll briefly go over in a little more detail and provide some professional insight into staff's perspective on the requested modifications. Starting with the thoroughfare corridor buffer, and you've heard a lot of this information already, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but they are requesting 50% reduction. What that results in is approximately an additional acre of developable area for the development. That area is being used predominantly for the travel lane and approximately 70 parking spaces on the southern side of the proposed building. The applicant already alluded to this, but you heard a very similar situation with Waltonwood Cary, which abuts this property to the east, where they came in and requested a thoroughfare corridor buffer reduction in order to gain additional parking, because what we are finding, or what the industry is telling us, is that their parking demands, especially with overlapping shifts and high visitation days, Mother's Day, Easter, those type of days, that their parking demand is much higher than our ordinance accounts for. So that's kind of the justification of their request. Staff does observe that provision of the full 100-foot thoroughfare corridor buffer would not make development of the site impossible. However, it would have a substantial impact on their proposed yield in either reducing the size of the assisted living facility itself the size of the assisted living facility itself or in reducing the number of single-family units allowable or developable on the remaining, remainder portion, remainder of the property with that future development plan if they had to shift this building farther back to account for both the buffer and the provision of the champion trees. Shifting this building to the south does allow them to protect the trees, champion trees which were mentioned and talked about in detail in the vicinity of the existing residents. With the changes to the champion tree ordinance that were adopted earlier this year, there were some champion trees that would have fallen, would have been considered champion trees under the old ordinance. They're 30, 31 inches. They would have been located in the thoroughfare corridor buffer in this parking lot area toward the rear. However, because of the increase in size to be considered a champion tree, that's gone Also, as mentioned briefly by the applicant's team, the front, almost half of the 880 feet of thoroughfare corridor buffer reduction is all but devoid of vegetation. A lot of the vegetation you see in this aerial photo is actually right on the property line or in the right-of-way. There are also some topographical considerations at the bridge itself at Kildare Farm Road. The site sits approximately 15 feet above the adjacent roadway, and that great difference tapers off as you move toward the back of the property. Briefly going over articulation requirements, as mentioned earlier, the community appearance manual requires the body or the middle portion of the building constitute at least 50 percent of the total building height, and since they're using a pitched roof building, that building height is measured to the median height of any pitched roof. This is not an uncommon request, and typically, it would be considered at a staff level to be okay. When you're designing residential-style buildings with steep pitches, it becomes very difficult to meet that 50 percent requirement because of the height of the building. It's aesthetic request. It would not result in any more or less open space preservation. It doesn't really relieve any practical difficulties in developing the site. It's merely a request to stick with a residential character that the applicant is choosing to go with. Third request is the removal of eight champion trees. As mentioned, the one champion tree, tree number one, is located in the vicinity of the existing residence. That's a large willow oak, similar in character to the three being retained in line with it. That tree sits in the middle of their proposed travel aisle, which serves the northern side of the building, and the other seven champion trees are clustered inside or right along the wood line to the east of the proposed, or the existing agricultural uses. They have overlapping CRZs, but most of them fall within either the building footprint, roadway footprint, or the BMP footprints in regards to grading impacting those critical root zones. The only thing staff would point out is, again, while it would not have, it would not prevent development of the site, it would possibly be possible to save tree number one if this road were rerouted behind the trees. However, it would obviously impact one or two lots, probably remove one or two lots from the future single-family subdivision. And finally, the Kildare Farm Road median, as mentioned several times by both groups, the western side of the road has not been widened to its full cross-section yet, so therefore, there's not enough sufficient width in that center turn lane to replace it with a full 18-foot width median as called for in the CTP. So, staff feels that the payment in lieu is probably the appropriate course until that other side develops. Just a modification summary, and we'll bring this back up when you're ready to make your motions and deliberate on the minor modifications themselves. Just goes over what the requirement was and what staff's observations are. And that concludes staff's presentation, and will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Very good. At this time, I'll invite cross-examination of town witnesses. Nope. Okay. Invite anyone who's been sworn in if they have objections to the competence of any evidence or testimony. Seeing none, we'll continue. Does anyone believe that this hearing warrants a continuance? Seeing no one, we now begin the deliberative phase of the hearing. Council members, questions or comments? Mr. France?
Just make some initial comments. I have no issues with the median request. That seems reasonable. Don't have any concerns with the articulation issues. Kind of like what's proposed, it's one of those kind of situations where sometimes the ordinance doesn't take everything into consideration, and sometimes things aren't a one-size-fits-all. Champion trees, to me, and the interior of the site, aren't that big of a concern. I appreciate saving the ones near Kildare Farm Road. The biggest concern, I guess I have, is the thoroughfare corridor buffer. You know, a lot of the conversations we had when we were coming up with the champion tree ordinance was, you know, we understand sometimes that champion trees may have to go or to fit a building or whatever, but it's that exterior buffer around the site that we really care about and that I think our citizens find most important. It's that look and the feel when you drive by, so I want to better understand the proposed changes and/or improvements to the corridor buffer. I mean, we're going from 100 feet to 50 feet. That would be planted Type A opaque?
It is required to be Type A opaque, and if you recall, the Cameron Pond and Panther Creek High School revegetation plans where that thoroughfare corridor buffer was cleared and associated with one of the power lines, it's the exact same revegetation plan that was used there.
Okay. What's the topography from the property line to 164? I mean, it's a downward slope?
It's a downward slope. At Kildare Farm Road, it's approximately 15-foot to allow clearance for the bridge, and then that starts to even out as you get toward the back of the property.
Okay. So, if after, once the revegetation took place, a year or two, whatever, when some things got a little size to them, would you be able to see the site or much of it from 160? I mean, is it going to be pretty much hidden? I mean...
As that buffer matures, you'll see less and less of the building. You'll always see some of the building, especially where it's naturally wooded. As you reduce the width of that buffer, you're going to get more visibility through it. The evergreens that are being planted in the bare section will provide more screening for that front section that will probably be present in the long term in the back section just due to the...
And are there other sites along 164 that have a buffer reduction, or would this be the first here?
There have been none in my mind.
The other one, the other one.
Yeah, Waltonwood, it's just right here.
Okay. And that was a 50-foot reduction as well?
Right. I think so.
Let me find you an area, and I'll talk a little bit about that. This will work for lack of a better slide, but this is Waltonwood Cary at the intersection of 164 and Cary Parkway. What was requested there was a reduction from the 50-foot thoroughfare corridor buffer along the ramp down to 30 feet right here where it was already cleared and revegetated. They came in and cleared additional 18 and a half feet or so to put in parking head-in. So, it wasn't along the corridor itself, it was along the ramp.
Okay.
However, as you can see, there were no buffer, was no buffer at all provided along Guernsey Trail on the south side of US 164 or in the Frostwood Drive area.
Okay. I'm good.
Could I tag team on that? I'm sorry.
You can tag me first.
Okay. I would ordinarily share your concerns about reducing the thoroughfare buffer, Mr. France, but I think, given the topography, given the opacity, and given the great need for parking at this, with this ability to add these parking spaces, it comes out to about 1.9 spaces per room, being in this kind of business. I can tell you, it takes, you know, between staffing and overlapping shifts and the visitation which you hope for, they're going to really need that parking, and I think being able to shift that building more south and east to provide better buffering of the north and those residences really is a good trade-off for everything. So, I'm really good with that. I'm really impressed with the walkability of the site. 3,000 linear feet of walkways plus the 1,000 feet of sidewalk along Kildare Farm Road. Lori must be just like jumping flips over there in this connectivity. Only 20 peak hour trips, you know, beast on my heart, and they actually are only building 87.6 percent of the allowable and approved 90,000-square-foot building that they could build. They're down to 68 beds from the 80 that they could have done. They really have seemed to try to maximize this site. I hate the loss of the champion trees, but I think the ones towards the street, as you mentioned, Don, really are the most important ones to save, so, and the payment in lieu is kind of a no-brainer. So, I feel like this is a, you know, really well-fought-out modifications that have come before us.
Ms. Robinson?
I agree with most of those points. The thoroughfare buffer is the thing that gives me the most concern, and while the area that's completely cleared right now will be replanted, I have two concerns. First is with the area that's wooded, that maybe it needs some additional plantings to help its opacity. And the second thing is, and we've done this in other places, is when you have a parking area in a substantially reduced buffer area, putting a hedge of, a row of hedges like along there, like some kind of, like holly bushes, will screen the cars because that's really what's offensive to see, and we want to beautify our community. So, for the cars that are passing by in 64, if they're not seeing the cars, they're just seeing off in the distance like fewer trees, and then the rooftop, that's not offensive. So, I would like to have seen the proposal, and maybe it's there.
It's actually there.
Okay. So, you have a hedge row all the way across there?
Correct. There's a green line of hedges that run the entire length of the parking area.
I think if you have that, and then you do some supplemental plantings in the already vegetated area, I'd feel more comfortable with that reduction.
And that existing vegetation area is required to meet a Type A buffer standard as well, so there will be some evergreen supplementation.
It will.
Probably on the inside edge, just due to the growth characteristics of evergreen trees. But yeah, there's no native evergreen understory in the forest, and so...
Yeah, and I thought I saw the word "undisturbed" in there, but they're not describing that area as an undisturbed then?
It is undisturbed.
Presently. But if you keep it undisturbed, then you can't do understory plantings, right?
We don't consider supplemental plantings as disturbance.
You don't?
It is disturbance, but it's...
It's a good disturbance.
They go in and they put in the tree, and they don't go in and run over it with equipment and everything else.
Okay, well, that's interesting because along Green Hope Elementary School, some residents complained because they tried to do some planting in what was considered an undisturbed buffer, and I believe that they were talked to about that because they...
I can follow up. I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, you might want to follow up on that. I mean, this is going back a couple of years, but they felt like they were...
Depends on who does the disturbing.
Yeah.
Depends on who's disturbing.
No comment.
I have a couple of questions. One is the, I guess, the drawing for the champion trees that are saved. The drawing shows circles covering part of the interior roadway. I just want to make sure we're not in the drip line with that roadway, and we're going to harm those trees in any way, and I know we have experts. I just want to clarify that those trees are okay.
There is disturbance in the critical root zone of the trees. That's not uncommon. The ordinance actually allows up to a 25 percent disturbance already. Keep in mind that those trees are in a developed area of the site, so there's already some existing impacts where you have a driveway and parking pads or whatever else. That's being discounted out of that critical root zone, so that can be disturbed and paved over. So, some of that's being traded off, but it's all under the 25 percent that's allowable in the ordinance.
Okay. And staff is, I'm trying to search for the right word, confident that those trees will remain safe?
We are as confident as staff can be, not knowing the future.
Okay. Very good. My other question has to do with the full access entrance and the alignment with what's across the road. Now, I know we have some developments proposed in process, and I want to know about the alignment, why we're not aligned with that. I know we're tying in 90 degrees where the other one across the street is not necessarily so, and we have office coming in across the street. Is that going to align?
Mr. Jensen, you want to speak to that?
And if not, why?
Yes, Mayor, the office building across the street will align directly opposite this main entrance, and this is actually where, if we ever build a median, this would be a strategic full-movement median opening would be.
Okay. Very good. Other questions? Mr. Yohab?
I'm okay with, I have a question about the trees. I'm okay with the other three things. I'm not happy about the buffer reduction, thoroughfare corridor reduction, but to me, the applicant has satisfactorily justified the reasons for doing that, so I'm okay. I actually like the roof look and the articulation one, and the median, of course, just makes sense to do that. But as far as the trees, and I probably wouldn't be asking this if we were just talking one tree, but we're talking eight trees, which is about as many champion trees as we've seen removed in one shot for quite a while, I think. They're asking for a waiver from our tree ordinance. So, this is our, I believe that was their terminology, and it was in their justification in this...
They're simply requesting that council approve their removal. They're planning on replacing those caliper inches in the plan.
Well, that's why, I guess, I'm confused about the terminology when they're at, because as mentioned tonight about a waiver from, I'm wondering why our ordinance, this is the new ordinance that we just went through and tried to understand, and I emphasize on "tried" because it is very complex, and that I'm sure Mr. Barker had dreams about at night, shaking his head, maybe there were nightmares. But it has all the priority lists and modifications to site design that could be done and all this kind of thing, and your comments, primarily in the staff report, but you alluded them tonight, for seven of those eight trees, really looks to me like there's no chance to save them. There is maybe a chance for number one, but I'll get to that in a minute. But why isn't our ordinance being applied, or is it? I mean, I don't, I guess I'm hung up on the waiver thing. If our ordinance was applied, shouldn't we see something like our ordinance says they can do this and do this and do the other thing, and they've done all this, and the result is we're losing the trees?
Well, one of the things is reducing perimeter buffers, which they're requesting to reduce the thoroughfare corridor buffer, in this case, as a perimeter buffer. The other thing to keep in mind is the ordinance does say that you can't, that you should not be saving champion trees and eliminating reasonable use of the property. And reasonable use of the property is obviously a subjective term, and since this plan is before council, you guys get to decide what reasonable use of the property is. Of all 14 trees, only one of them does not overlap CRZs of another, so they all be Tier One categories, categorizes as a Tier One rank for preservation on the site because they're large. The tree number 13 is a 60-inch quad poplar. It by itself would be a Tier One and have to come to council for removal regardless. So, the question before you is, is there a way to design this site and have reasonable use of the property while saving all 12 of those trees? Staff's position is, given that all of those trees at the rear of the site overlap and that there's an adopted PDD which anticipated up to 90,000 square feet of assisted living and the adjacent single-family residences, there's no way to get all of that, what is by adoption, reasonable use of the property on the site, and still save those trees in the back, given there are clustering. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. We'll see what...
Well, I don't know if this will help, but just to clarify one thing with the new ordinance, and Mr. Barker can help me if I'm saying this wrong, but tried to refresh my memory. I think maybe what you're remembering is there's certain, the priority order and the things that get preserved first, a lot of that ties into what could be staff-level approvals of champion tree removal, so they have to go through, you know, look at this kind of tree and that kind of tree in that location, and if all those are exhausted, there's certain trees that staff can approve removal of administratively without it having to come to you. But as Mr. Hales explained, we're kind of past that point with this plan, so that pushes it to a plan that has to come to you for review. So, it may just be that, as you said, the ordinance is very complicated, so some of those details that you're remembering, I think, may tie more into the staff-level approval of plans.
So, you're saying we're past that point. What did you mean?
That they've already tried to exhaust all of the options for...
Staff.
Tree, like one was, you know, reduce parking or...
And as Mr. Hales was saying, certain trees just automatically have to come to you because they're so large and so, you know, so... And also, this plan has to come to you for approval because of all the modifications, so that throws the entire plan up to you for approval, and it throws it into a separate approval process where we look at the criteria of 3.19.2 minor modifications and whether they're meeting the intent and purpose of the ordinance in general with looking at everything, and then whether the modification, as Mr. Hales was talking about, without the modification, are they going to have reasonable use of the site? And that's the criteria that you all should be looking at when you're evaluating.
Appreciate that clarification. I guess, maybe in the future, I would like to see some, and maybe this is just administrivia, I don't know, but some connection to our ordinance with, in the staff report for this kind of thing. I mean, I just, it looks, you know, when the applicant's justifications were waiving the ordinance, we're really not...
That's right. I think the use of the word "waiver" there is not the most correct choice of words. It is a minor modification to the ordinance. They're not asking to waive it completely because they are replacing the caliper inches of trees on-site. Now, we have had folks who want to waive the champion tree ordinance and not replace the caliper inches. That's a different situation. That's not what these folks are proposing.
So, I just would like to see, at least in the future, a little more clarity in terms of that in the staff report to show how that new ordinance is being... of that in, in the staff report to show how that new ordinance is being applied as opposed to just being waived or ignored, if, if you will.
Okay.
Thank you. Having gone through that, I do have a question about tree number one. It looks like the only one that may have a, a reasonable chance of, of salvation, if you will. If the roadway were redesigned, we'd lose a lot or two, I guess, in your.
And I'll let the applicant speak to what they looked at as far as options for alignment of that roadway. There is a retaining wall and a portion of the building which would be impacting a portion of that critical root zone regardless, but whether or not that road could be realigned.
If we could hear from the applicant, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, the hearing has reached the one-hour time limit.
Thank you.
Good catch, Ed, on the waiver thing.
Willie, Willie Hood again. Going to your question about tree number one, because of the grading that has to take place on the site from front to back, there's actually a retaining wall between that tree and the building. I think you can.
Shut up.
It's that black line right, right there. So that's the, that's where the, this disturbance would be, and that would be more than 25% of that tree. So we figured since that tree was gone anyway, that's where we put the driveway. So it was, again, picking the winners and picking the losers. Okay?
I have a question while Willie's here, if I could, but I'm kind of curious about the BMPs that you have that are impacting 19 and 20. Do we need, are these like going to be wet ponds? Is that what these BMPs are? I mean, it seems like we keep hearing about alternatives to different, to doing the wet ponds. I mean, BMP, BMPs that are dry ponds or many other devices that could be used instead of just the standard wet pond. Is there some device that could be used that would allow these trees to be spared?
We'll let Bill answer that question, please.
Those are wet ponds. Those are proposed as wet ponds. And, and actually, if they, well, we couldn't really use dry ponds anyhow because we don't get the percent of nitrogen removal.
Okay.
We, we either have to have wet ponds or bio-retention areas or underground or, or sand filters. And, but even if we could do dry detention or, or bio-retention, the grading associated with those, because even in a bio-retention, you've got to excavate it and then replace it with a media and plant it. So the, and, and that is, as I think Bo mentioned, the, the site falls from Killdeer Farm Road to the back, and so to intercept the drainage, it re, the BMPs need to be at the back of the site. And whatever type we used, the, the grading for those would still impact the trees in that location.
And they'd have to be that large? If you use some other device, would it have to be that large?
I don't know whether they would have to be, well, they wouldn't have to be that shape and that size. We, we broke that into, into two instead of one, just because we thought it, it worked very well topographically. And we, and we do have to provide for that roadway connection to the back. I, I can't say that other types would be that same size because it'd be a, a different shape, different, different criteria.
But you think regardless of its shape, it would still need to impact those trees?
I, I think it would. The, the only way that I could think that it would not is to push it farther back and that would be back into the residential area.
I see.
And this, the BMPs that are shown here serve this site, not the residential. The residential will have its own.
Just this phase.
That's what, the residential will have its own BMP.
Okay.
And, and, and these two BMPs are wholly for the assisted living.
Okay. You know, I'm getting a lot of feedback from citizens that they're tired of seeing these wet pond BMPs. You know, they're not really considered attractive, they kind of, people say that they breed mosquitoes and stuff like that. Even, even if you can't save these trees, is that, is there some alternative that we could do to that so we're not just basically putting in a nuisance on the site that's going to back up to residential?
Well, I, I think that's, I think that's totally a function of how well it's designed. I mean, a, a wet pond can, can certainly be an aesthetic plus instead of a negative. If, if you're going to cut the size down and just do the bare minimum and no aeration in it and, and don't landscape it properly, then yeah, I can see how a resident could object, but there are many instances where wet ponds, there is maybe not as many instances where a wet pond is an asset aesthetically as there are negatives. I, I don't know the.
Is this designed to be an asset?
This will be an asset. This, that drive that accesses the residential and the walkway, there's a walkway that connects from, from this. When we're talking about the pedestrian loop, one of those loops doesn't show up yet, but the pedestrian walk that connects to the residential community on the, at the top of the page and the, the resident, and the pedestrian link that connects along this road to the residential will create a large exterior loop. And so people could walk from this facility or from the residential to the residential around the roadway system and then back here. So that needs to be done as a very aesthetically positive thing because it's going to be about 20 feet from a pedestrian walkway.
And I think, just so you know our perspective, we don't have any assurances of that unless you tell us that there's an assurance of that, so.
Assurance of?
That it's going to be an asset, that it's going to be designed in such a way that it'll be an asset and not one of these like, you know, fences with, you know, chain link fence around a pond that's a nuisance and still water that attracts mosquitoes. I mean, we don't know from where we sit what your intent is and, and unless it's somehow assured to us that it's going to be designed with some kind of features that make it an asset, we don't know that.
I understand that. I'm trying to think of how we can say that.
That's what I was thinking. And my follow-up is, if I heard you.
We have a 30-foot, ultimately a 30-foot type B buffer between the BMPs and the single-family, which we're, we're putting in half of it, 15 feet, and, and that's a fairly heavy planting standard that we're developing. And then when the single-family goes in, they'll put in the other 15 feet of that, that buffer. So your ordinance does require that these facilities be screened and we are showing screening around them. So, and I think we have to look at the aesthetic of it as, as what it does for water quality for our region. All of these, all of these BMPs are serving a small piece of the puzzle to, to provide quality water.
Mr. Smith?
Well, as a part of those early meetings when we were going through that, mostly with the Wimbledon community, and I think the key and the whole momentum back with those original rezonings, it all seemed to fall in place with this piece of the development being as far in that corner as possible. That gives them the most flexibility with those single-family homes to, to be of the same look and feel of what's already in, in Wimbledon. And having, knowing people at Walton Wood and looking at that, it's not exactly a community that sits outside, but I can tell you when I'm in Walton Wood and I look out, I can't see the cars or the traffic and the movement and that's 30, 30 feet. And, you know, going to the hospital and going down Route 1 all the time, the topography is higher, and I think it is important that we have some good opaque buffer there and we'll have a recovery, but I think, I think this plan deals with that look of looking at cars all the time. And, you know, it was interesting to listen to the tree conversations because when I was looking at this, I said, gee, it's working, we're going to get a lot more caliber out of it. We just lose some that, I don't have the insight if they're really healthy or not, but in the end, I think as we got this going in, they, they've met the spirit of that by the, having to replace the calipers. We've got the, the stringent buffer between a highway and, and the parking lot and the topography aids that. And I think the answers were already addressed to the other stuff regarding the median. And I, the point I'm really trying to make is this is very critical for the success of the look and feel of this area as we finish this project. That's, I think that's the point, you know, that I'm trying to make there. So I'm actually quite pleased with when those original concepts were bandied about many, a couple of years ago, I lose track of time, and with the Wimbledon neighborhood. This was viewed as, I think, very positive with them because it makes, gives them that, that ability to make sure that there's a good buffer between those homes and everything else. So, you know, I mean, I appreciate all this conversation, but, you know, I felt like the work was been done on this project and I, I think it's, it merits moving forward with those variations. That's my take on it.
Thank you, Mayor. I had wanted to follow up on something Mr. Hood said that in regard to the choice of these kind of BMPs and in order to get enough ni, the sufficient amount of nitrogen out of the water, this is the type that's really required. And I think it's always good to be reminded that even though we're looking at this piece of land, that what we're trying to achieve is overall good water quality. And I thought that was a really great comment to, to make to remind us about that. We're part of a much bigger ecosystem and puzzle. It helps me to hear that.
Other comments in the deliberative phase before we move on?
I only had a couple of comments. I really appreciate the detailed descriptions and the work done by the applicant to talk about the articulation and talk about Williamsburg. I didn't know that, even though I read the staff report, I didn't catch that part, whether it was Williamsburg. So I do like the fact that specifically the pitch roof does make it look more residential than institutional, even though this is a somewhat institutional use. I think it will give a lot of harmony and blend in with the single-family homes that will eventually be there. I also was very appreciative of the work done to reach out to the neighboring community to increase the, the buffer. Obviously will help the initial single-family that's not there, but I think it helps all of the community. My only concern, and I think Councilmember Robinson brought it up, is that is much higher, so whatever hedge that is, it's going to need to be, you know, one that grows quite large, because otherwise we are going to be able to see the cars. And I thought it was interesting that the rest of the scrub down on the eastern edge was a lot of sweetgums, so you can take down any of those you find. They're just like nemesis. I hate a sweet gum tree. But I'm glad to see that you're adding in all the opaque buffering. I think that'll help quite a bit. So I think, unless anyone else has any inclination, I make a motion.
We gotta move, I gotta close the public comment portion, part of the meeting unless someone else has a public comment.
Okay.
All right. Closing the public comment portion of the meeting and asking Mr. Hales to help us with the motions necessary at this time.
I'll just refer you to your staff report since each minor modification has its own set of approval criteria and it just gets cumbersome to list them all. And I provided the modification summary on your screen for, a summary of each minor modification in the order that they appear in your staff report.
All right, very good.
And what I heard from council is, I'd like to split this up because I think there are some people who are, would like to vote against certain modifications. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the thoroughfare corridor buffer reduction, the articulation requirement, and the Killdeer Farm Road median payment in lieu.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And then would you like to make that motion, sorry? Well, I'll make a motion to approve the champion tree removal.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion.
I'm going to vote against this one section here. I'm just not convinced thoroughly by the testimony tonight, although I appreciate Mr. Hales and Mrs. Glover's clarification, that's for sure. I'm just not thoroughly convinced that all of those trees have to be removed. I, I would like to have seen more specific tie into our ordinance and I'm not convinced that there could not be a reasonable use of the property. Can't be this site plan, I understand that specifically, but there can't be reasonable use of the property with saving some of those trees. So I'm, I'm just going to vote no on.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to two.
Continue. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan and for the reasons that were discussed and moved that we approved the proposed site plan with the conditions as stated that the applicant must satisfactorily address any remaining development review committee comments on the master plans set and submitted for signature.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Since voted against the trees and you can't, that's connected to the site plan, you can't do the site plan if those trees are going to be in the way. I guess I'm going to have to vote against the site plan, but it, it's not because I, I don't think an assisted living, you know, center is, is a, is a need here in Cary, I really do, and I appreciate the applicant's presentation, but I think if I voted against the trees, I'm going to have to vote against the site plan.
Not necessarily.
Not really.
Because the council overrode that by saying it's okay to remove these trees, so given that being okay, do you like the site plan the way it is? I mean, it's, it's.
All right, all right, all right.
It's totally philosophical, Ed, go with your gut.
All right.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. If everything's in order, then we'll close this public hearing. Thank you. Our second quasi-judicial public hearing is for Mont Bel Phase One and Two. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who would like to speak at this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is seated to my right. We'll pause just a moment to allow those individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths, and the council will pause from doing or saying anything until that has been completed.
You know, my, my leg got bad on the last evening before the last day and I couldn't really play the last one, but I played.
Yeah. And of course the doctor said, what are you crazy? You know, so it turned out it was effective because I'm very prone to that. I'm on a lot of Teflon.
All we need is the council.
But we had 60 every day. It was 50s, you could tee off, but it probably. But it was great. Kevin played. Scott Bogman was there.
That's who did that?
Between guy.
Got a good feeling about it.
I did lie to you. It's true.
The process, make the signatures easier and maybe we didn't talk about that enough.
Interesting. I noticed the stop there.
Did he turn off his radio when he got there?
Yeah. Interesting. I noticed the stop thing.
Yeah.
All right. Now I'll ask council members if they had any site visits, ex parte, communication, financial relationships, special knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose. Ms. Adcock, at the beginning of this meeting, you made several statements.
I just told all.
Do you have any additional?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Robinson?
None.
I have none. Ms. France?
Nope.
Ms. Bush?
No.
Mr. Yurha? All right. Very well. Based on the disclosures we've heard from council members, I would invite anyone to the podium who's been sworn in to speak if they have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing no one, we'll continue. I'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing. Mr. Grattis of our staff will introduce this hearing.
Good evening, council. The case before you has two site plans, actually. The first one would be for Phase One, and that is fourteen SB 003. And Phase Two of the project is fourteen SB 005. This particular site, or these two sites, are between Yates Store Road and East Farrell Road on approximately ninety-one acres. As you can see, the project location is above. I also would like to note that there is proposed major road that would go through the property, cutting it into approximately two even slices. And that extension would be Yates Store Road and would connect to East Farrell Road, and also known as Ernest Jones Road in Chatham County. The Parks and Recreation Facility's master plan indicates that there is a proposed greenway trail along a stream buffer. As you'll see, that is on the eastern portion of the site. And then on the, or excuse me, to the west of the site, we have the existing American Tobacco Trail. Photo of the American Tobacco Trail disclaimer, this particular photo was taken a couple miles south, two miles south, but after onsite visit, the particular portion that goes adjacent to the site is relatively similar. There are some stream buffers along the eastern portion of the property, as seen here. The site is zoned PDD major and is within the Weldon Ridge PDD. This is a depiction of the site provided by the applicant. Please note that the orientation of the plan has changed, and that going towards the left is going north, and toward the right is going south. Phase One will consist of forty-four housing units with about 1.03 units per acre, with a minimum lot size in Phase One of a little bit over twenty thousand square feet. Phase Two will have sixty-five housing units on approximately, excuse me, about 1.3 units per acre on a minimum lot size of around sixteen and a half thousand square feet. Something else worth noting in the plan is that as a part of that particular road extension, the applicant has proposed to have an alignment of the American Tobacco Trail go directly under the proposed Yates Store Road. There are three modification requests associated with this particular site plan. The applicant proposes to remove one champion tree in order to construct Yates Store Road. It was a thirty-two inch poplar that is proposed for removal. This particular portion of Yates Store Road, the alignment is particular, and to save this tree at this time is something that council would need to consider, also with the understanding that more than twenty-five percent of the critical root zone of the tree will be disturbed. And that particular modification request is for Phase One, Site Plan fourteen SB 003. There is the location of the particular champion tree. The second modification request is in Phase Two of the particular site plan, fourteen SB 005. The applicant is proposing a reduction of site connectivity from the required 1.2 minimum to 1.1. And this particular situation, as seen on this next slide, shows that there are some site constraints for Phase Two. To the, to the east, which you'll see is on the top portion of the sheet, there is a significant stream buffer. To the west, which is seen on the lower portion of the picture, is the American Tobacco Trail. And then also, as you can see, there are some pedestrian connections that the applicant is proposing to connect to the American Tobacco Trail and the proposed greenway. But because of some of these site limitations, the applicant is not proposing any further road connections for this phase, and the only way for vehicles to enter and exit the site would be to go to Yates Store Road, another extension by which the applicant is proposing to construct as a part of the full project. Modification number three was not included in the staff report initially, but nevertheless, they are asking for a payment in lieu for the construction of Crooked Pine Drive in the amount of thirty-two thousand, thirty-two thousand, forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. I will go ahead and show you where that location is on Phase One. As you can see, it is in the northeast portion of this site. And what it is, is the proposed alignment for Crooked Pine Drive to the adjacent subdivision has it going over a small sliver of this particular parcel. All in all, I believe it was around nine hundred and ten square feet of pavement and about two thousand square feet of right-of-way dedication.
That is really confusing.
There are some updates to this particular staff report that I want council to be aware of. Initially, there was a traffic impact analysis that was going to address some items on page eleven of twelve of your staff report. And one of the items that was no longer required is that a design facility, a design that facilitates U-turns at the westbound approach of Yates Store Road and East Farrell Road was one that is currently not proposed for inclusion. And then the second one was that there was no longer going to be concrete islands for a leftover access. The reason for these particular modifications, and I'll go back one slide to show you, is that there was some action taken by council previously in November that was going to no longer require the need of these particular improvements. Most notably, what it was is that particular section of Yates Store Road was going to have four lanes. It was determined that it was only appropriate to have two lanes. So some of those improvements were for a four-lane section. Now that they're proposing two lanes, those improvements would not be required. Third item, as mentioned previously, an update to the staff report, is that payment in lieu in the amount of approximately thirty-two thousand dollars, which was just mentioned as their third request for minor modification.
Excuse me. It's hard for me to understand where that is in relation to the whole thing.
Okay.
So at some point, can you go back and show us the entire map again and show us where that point is?
Absolutely. If you'd like me to do that now, I'm more than welcome.
If it's convenient, if it's not, you can show us later.
No, I can do it now. It's not a problem. So in this particular picture before you, it is going to be mouse. In that particular corner where my mouse is centered. So it's on the other side of a stream buffer in that particular situation, and it just happens to be that a portion of the applicant's site happens to fall to the alignment of that other street, Crooked Pine Way.
So can you show us the one where they're asking for the waivers to the connection, and show us how that relates?
Yes.
Okay.
And in this particular site, the reason that this portion of the set was only shown is that they were only asking for a connectivity waiver in Phase Two of the particular site.
Oh, I see. So the one's in Phase One?
Yep.
Thank you.
And we'll go over that again. I know it's a little bit confusing with this one.
I couldn't tell, because the maps were changing, so I kept trying to reorient myself. Okay.
No, not a problem. And again, so as you can see, future Phase Two is the portion that is requesting a connectivity, a minor modification, and in Phase One is requesting this particular payment in lieu. And there's a summary table that I'll show you regarding the three total minor modifications and which site plan they would apply to. It is now the time on this evening where the applicant will be making their presentation, and I'm also aware that the applicant might want to also clarify how the minor modifications are playing into each phase. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Jason Barron with the Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. Here with me tonight is Mr. Ed Tang, a professional engineer with Withers and Ravenel, whose firm has provided engineering and land planning for the plan that's before you tonight, and also Mr. Mike Horn of Kimbley Horn and Associates, who's a traffic engineer, has performed a traffic impact analysis associated with this plan. I will keep my comments brief and turn it over to our experts. I will say that this is overall, as Mr. Grattis indicated, it's a roughly a hundred acres of land being developed for a hundred and nine units, being developed in two phases. The first phase, minimum twenty thousand square foot lots, that works out to roughly 1.03 units per acre. The second phase, minimum sixteen thousand square foot lots, so it works out to roughly 1.3 dwelling units per acre. I do want to emphasize that the overall development density permitted in each of these phases is one point dwell, 1.8 dwelling units per acre. So this is not a situation where the overall development density has been, has been squeezed out of this site. And I think that the, the limited number of minor modifications are a reflection of that fact. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the testimony over to Mr. Ed Tang, who can talk about the, the minor modifications as well as the requirements for approval of the site plan. Thank you.
Good evening, council, and Mr. Mayor. My name is Ed Tang with Withers and Ravenel. I'm the civil engineer for the Montvale subdivision project. A little bit of my background, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the Florida Institute of Technology, and I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina and the state of Florida. I've been practicing engineering for twenty years, and the last twenty, the last eleven, I should say, have been practicing here in North Carolina, with my work predominantly here in Cary and the surrounding triangle region. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Glen Jan LLC, to provide expert witness testimony for the Montvale subdivision before you. Staff did an excellent job of presenting the case as it relates to the six approval criteria and the minor modifications that we're seeking. To provide some additional orientation for you, I know that the slides are going back and forth quite a bit. The slide that's in front of you that is a color rendering shows the general layout of both phases of the project. Generally, the area to the east on this plan is known as Pod SF9 within the Weldon Ridge PDD. The area to the west, or to your left, as you're looking to the screen, is known as SF7 within the Weldon Ridge PDD. The American Tobacco Trail runs along the southern border, along the, along the picture here. Trying to get the house moving. There it is. The American Tobacco Trail runs along the entire southern side, along this image here. The Yates Store Road extension basically runs, as Mr. Grattis mentioned, through the center almost of the site. Currently, Yates Store Road ends about where my cursor is here. At the end of that road, there's a access to a street called Elon Hall Drive, which is part of the Weldon Ridge PDD. The extension of Yates Store Road would connect all the way down to East Farrell Road, going over the American Tobacco Trail. And the road roughly straddles and borders Wake and Chatham Counties. We're here tonight because our total number of lots exceeds a hundred lots when you add both projects together. As Mr. Grattis mentioned, the property is approximately a hundred acres to be developed as single-family detached residential, which are, the only uses allowed within the PDD. And our minimum lot sizes in the PDD are twenty thousand square feet within the SF9 portion of the project, and sixteen thousand square foot lots on the SF7 portion. With that, there's also a footnote that the lots that back up to the American Tobacco Trail have to be a minimum of twenty thousand square feet, and those have been provided around the perimeter of the site. The density, as Mr. Barron mentioned, for the site is well below what has been approved in the PDD. We are at 1.03 units per acre on the SF9 pod, and 1.3 units per acre on the SF7 pod to the west in Chatham County. I'd like to address each point of the six approval criteria as outlined in your staff reports. The first approval criteria is, does the plan comply with all applicable requirements of the LDO, including the development and design standards of Chapter Seven and Eight, as well as dedication and improvements provisions to Chapter Eight, as well as applicable, as well as all applicable town specifications? The plan does comply with all applicable requirements of the LDO, including Chapter Seven and Eight, with the exception of the three minor modifications that are being requested. One, the removal of a single champion tree within the right-of-way of the future Yates Store Road. Two, the reduction of the connectivity index from 1.2 to 1.1 within the SF7 pod of the project. And three, a payment in lieu for the extension of Crooked Pine Drive that's located in the northeast corner of the site that happens to cross and clip the corner of our, our property. The first minor modification that we're seeking from the towns ordinance is the removal of a single champion tree. That is a thirty-two inch poplar, and it is located approximately right here. I know it's kind of hard to see on, on this image maybe, but it's right there off to the eastern side of the Yates Store Road pavement. As you recall, council has approved the general alignment of the Yates Store Road extension and the grade separated crossing with the American Tobacco Trail earlier this year. The extension starts, and we're fixed to that start point at the current end of Yates Store Road. Again, it is located right about here at the top of the project, and we have designed it and committed to extending it to East Farrell Road, which requires us to basically fit the geometry of this road within a very limited distance that we have. And there is quite a bit of topography within that stretch that the road will go in. And due to the horizontal and vertical geometries and the standards that we have to meet, the design of the road is, is going to require the removal of this tree because of the grading and just being that close to the roadway, just from a safety standpoint as well. And we, we propose to replace the caliber inches of the tree that is being removed. So based on the geometry and other requirements of the LDO, such as street yards, meeting the right-of-way widths within the comprehensive transportation plan, and just sound engineering practice, it is my professional opinion that the removal of this single tree is required to construct Yates Store Road extension, given the alignment of the existing road to the north, and where we have to tie it in to make that grade separated crossing with the American Tobacco Trail, and basically hit the elevation at East Farrell Road and to make it all tie together. The second modification that we're asking for is a reduction of the connectivity index from 1.2 to 1.1, and that is located here on the SF7 pod to the western side of the project. We're asking for the minor modification from Section 7.10.3A of the Land Development ordinance. This section of the LDO contains a mathematical formula that is designed to measure the strength of the inner connectivity of the site. These mathematical standards require a connectivity rating of 1.2. The proposed low-density, single-family community that is in question here is a rating of 1.1 when you do all the math, and based upon the site constraints, it is just not possible for the project to satisfy that ordinance section. As pointed out, the pod, as you can see, is essentially a three-sided parcel. One of the sides runs the entire length of the American Tobacco Trail. The other side is adjoined by a buffered stream, and then the third side is what is the proposed Yates Store Road extension. Given that we're providing internal adequate access within the subdivision section here of the SF7 pod, we believe that, you know, crossing the American Tobacco Trail, or stubbing a road to the Tobacco Trail, or crossing the stream buffer are two things that we probably will not be able to get permitted by the NC DOT and the Division of Water Quality for those types of crossings. These site constraints, along with the narrow configuration of the property, make compliance with this section of the LDO very difficult. And based upon these constraints and the low-density zoning, we believe this modification is the least of a deviation required to make compliance practicable, and this modification is justified. The third minor modification is a request for a payment in lieu of thirty-two thousand dollars, thirty-two thousand, forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents for the extension of Crooked Pine Drive. As Mr. Grattis mentioned, Crooked Pine Drive is up here in the northeastern tip of the property corner. It is an existing fifty-foot residential street that exists within the Weldon Ridge PDD. It was stubbed there when that portion of the dump was built with, with, and I guess holding in mind that it would be extended in the future when the properties around it would be developed. A portion of this road, if it were to be extended, if you were to extend the right-of-way basically in a straight line through the property, it would clip that little corner and form a small triangle that is about twenty-one hundred square feet in right-of-way. We don't control the entire tri- We don't control the entire tri... well, we control the triangle, we don't control the rectangular portion that a road would typically sit in. So, it would be difficult for us to build a triangular portion of a road that has no other areas that we can connect to. So, that's why we're asking for this payment in lieu. The location of the road is remote. It's got stream buffers around it that we can't get to from within the site. And the developer, as I mentioned, has agreed to dedicate the right-of-way needed for the future road construction. When the property, probably to the east, gets developed, they would be the likely ones to pull the road through. We are also prepared to grant construction easements for the construction of this extension when the time comes. And it just makes it very hard for us to build a portion of a road that consists really of 900 square feet of asphalt at this time, that isn't a squared-off piece that we can build, and also due to the grades. So, with that, we believe that payment in lieu is a viable alternative to having to make that connection. Aside from the three minor modifications, the plans are in compliance with the town's development criteria outlined in Chapter 7 and 8 of the LDO. We have been through three review cycles, and there are some remaining comments that we are prepared to address with the DRC if we're approved. As a condition of approval, we would be addressing those comments before the Mylar or Master set. And we believe these comments are all addressable. I've been working with staff to resolve the remaining comments. The second approval criteria is, does the plan adequately protect other property or residential uses located on the same property from the potential adverse effects of the proposed development? The plan does adequately protect property from the proposed development by providing 50-foot undisturbed buffer along the American Tobacco Trail, the entire length of it. An additional 25 feet is also being provided as a requirement of the PDD, making it a total of 75-foot buffered area that will provide some additional transition and screening, whether it be from the trail or from the backs of these homes, from other areas, and it will provide an appropriate transition to the more rural areas west of the Tobacco Trail. Repairing buffers exist throughout the property boundaries, and these repair buffers provide some natural transitions between this and the existing phases of Weldon Ridge that already have been developed. And this will integrate appropriately with existing neighboring properties that are also all single-family detached residential, or if they're not developed right now, they're zoned for residential uses. In fact, the lot sizes that we are being provided here are actually larger than the ones that are the minimum lot sizes in the adjoining portions of Weldon Ridge. So, these are actually larger lots that we would be building than the ones we back up to. Setbacks internally and required landscaping between the lots will minimize any adverse impacts to property owners adjacent to or within the same project within each other. And therefore, based on the aforementioned items, it is my opinion that the plan adequately protects other property or residential uses located on the same property from potential adverse effects of the development. The third approval criteria is, does the plan provide harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties? As mentioned in the previous criteria, the subject property is surrounded by complementary uses within the Weldon Ridge PDD that are zoned for residential uses, and those that are not developed yet are also designated as low-density or very low-density on the land use plan. This is an area that is planned for similar low-density residential development. The site includes lot sizes, pedestrian connections, and road connections that further the town's goals and facilitates the development of adjacent vacant parcels. The project's density, as I mentioned, is well below the allowable density within the PDD. As a result, the proposed low-density, single-family community will be in harmony with the development of nearby properties. The fourth criteria is, does the plan provide safe conditions for pedestrians or motorists, and prevents a dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicular ways? The plans provide for multiple greenway connections to the town greenway system along the eastern or northeastern side of the property, running basically the entire length here. We are building a greenway trail system as part of the project. Internal sidewalks, crosswalks, and trail connections are also being provided to ensure that there are no conflicts with pedestrians and motorists, and the street network is designed in a manner that will result in vehicle speeds that are conducive within a typical single-family development. The fifth criteria is, does the plan provide safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site? The plans include the extension of Yates Door Road and its connection to East Farrell Road, as I mentioned earlier. This extension will provide for additional access to the site from various points to the south and west of the project, so that people can get to the site if there is an emergency. Currently, there's really only one way into Weldon Ridge, and it is either coming down Yates Door Road to the end, where it terminates now, or coming across Weldon Ridge Boulevard. And those two areas, you're either coming from the north, near Carpet and Fire Station Road, or to the west, along a portion of Morsel Parkway. By making this extension, we open up another possible avenue for emergency vehicles to get to the site. There are also multiple street stubs within the SF9 pod, the one that is to the right of the Yates Door Road on that plan you were looking at. These street stubs will connect to the adjacent properties for future extensions, as those properties develop, thus providing a network of interconnected streets for safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site. Were used in the SF7 pod, as you can see, we had asked for a minor modification for the connectivity, because we're environmentally constrained and with the American Tobacco Trail, cul-de-sacs are used where they're needed. We've got two of them, and these all meet the town's requirements in terms of their size and dimensions for the safe turnaround of emergency vehicles. With that, I'm going to ask my colleague, Mr. Mike Horn, to address the six of approval criteria as related to traffic. In conclusion, it's my professional opinion that the Montvale subdivision plans 14 SB003 and 14 SB005 meet the criteria as set forth in the Cary Land Development Ordnances for the approval of the project. I'm available to answer your questions after our testimony. Thank you.
Very good. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Mike Horn. I'm with Kimmy Horn and Associates. I'm a licensed engineer here in North Carolina, having practiced traffic engineering for over 30 years. I have reviewed the TAR prepared for this project, as well as the widening plans and the extension of Yates Door Road to East Farrell. And in my professional opinion, with the connection of Yates Door Road to East Farrell Road, and the turn lanes at the project entrance, the plans mitigate the anticipated traffic congestion impacts generated by the project. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, we have no further witnesses to call on, but we believe the evidence that has been submitted in support of the application shows that we satisfy the criteria for approval of a site plan, and we respectfully request approval of the same. We're here to answer any questions that you have. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I'd invite other speakers who have been sworn in who wish to speak in support of the application to approach the podium. First speaker. Seeing no one, I'll invite cross-examinations of the witnesses who have already testified in support of the requests. See no one. Open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. I'll invite the first speaker forward. See no one. Call on town staff for any testimony they wish to add.
I'd like just to remind council of these minor modifications. They'd like to hear them. The first would be for connectivity. Connectivity index requires 1.2 or greater. The applicant is requesting 1.1. The second would be a champion tree removal. Requirement is to retain those champion trees. The applicant is requesting to remove one champion tree. Additionally, applicant is required to provide road improvements and dedication of right-of-way to sites, and they are to provide road connections. In this particular instance, they're requiring, or excuse me, requesting a payment in lieu for an extension of the portion that is in the northeastern portion of their site that they have difficulty accessing. At this time, staff has no additional testimony, but would be more than happy to answer any questions or clarify any items involving the minor modifications and the two site plans at hand, if you'd like.
Thank you. At this time, I'd invite cross-examination of the town's witness. No. Anyone been sworn in has objection to the competency of the evidence, of any evidence or testimony? Does anyone have reason to believe we should continue this hearing? Seeing no one, now we can begin the deliberative phase of the hearing. Councilmembers, Ms. Robinson.
I have a quick question. Can you tell me how this part, these two parcels of land relate to the parcel of land in Weldon Ridge that was supposed to be set aside for the Catholic school, and then they ended up not building the Catholic school there? What happened with that piece of land, and where is it in relation to this piece of land?
I'm going to call on additional staff to see if they have further information, if that's okay.
Oh, yeah.
to your question, although it's unclear that anyone directly has an answer right now. Mr. Barker will attempt to answer.
There was some discussion about changing the condition of that property to do something other than a school, but I don't think that did not go through.
We never approved it, I can remember.
Yeah, we never approved it.
So, it's still sitting as a public, some kind of public use?
Yes.
Where is it in relation to this parcel?
That, I cannot answer exactly where it is. I apologize for that.
Okay, Ed might know.
You can? Okay, great.
The area, I think, Councilmember Robinson, you were asking about, I think it's, I believe it's this parcel up here, the adjacent parcel to the north of this, I think is known as SF6, I'm sorry, which is another residentially zoned piece. And the school site, I believe, is up here, closer towards Weldon Ridge Boulevard and Yates Door Road. So, it's basically two parcels over.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Other questions?
I have a question. I thought I saw a picture that showed connectivity from Phase 2 across the stream buffer, or not connectivity, but it looked like a stub. And now it's a cul-de-sac. Could you?
Yeah, let me find this slide, and I'll show you. Was this the slide you're referring to?
No, there was one with the stream buffer and the AT.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so, oh, so it's actually, the cul-de-sac is probably under that orange ball?
That is correct.
Okay, so, what is the reason for not, for the request to not have connectivity across the stream buffer anywhere? Because from what I'm seeing is, or maybe the applicant can answer this, basically, we've got one entrance for 65 homes. Is that correct? Can somebody speak to why that is? I get, sorry, you don't have to say why you're not crossing the American Tobacco Trail, I get that. But why not any of the other?
Because there, that stream, there's a 200-foot wide buffer, it's 100-foot on either side of that stream crossing, and there are two streams that actually converge very close to that area. Topographically speaking, to that area, and if we were to extend the street, I guess where you were asking about the big yellow bulb. There is a huge gorge right through there that drops off about 50 feet across there. So, topographically, it becomes a challenge to try to get anything across that 200-foot wide ravine that we can't build nor probably get a permit for, because there's also a crossing, Yates Door Road has also crossed that same stream to the east, Wan's Array, so it's unlikely that they would permit a second crossing within that close of a proximity for really the same Weldon Ridge PDD project, since they look at cumulative impacts.
So, is there any, across that stream at all, there's no likely spot to go, that's not really, is that north? That's really north. This is like toned, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so, would it be north? Is there any?
North and east.
Was there no, or is it east? Yeah, it's east, right, towards Yates Door. I'm just curious as why, why you're asking for it?
Yeah, for those reasons, we just, you know, from a permitting standpoint, with the existing crossing Yates Door Road now, with the same intersecting stream, DNR is probably unlikely to permit another impact within that same general area for the same project, because they look at this as Weldon Ridge, as one cumulative project. So, with that one crossing Yates Door Road, they'll be unlikely to permit a second crossing within close proximity.
Not to mention, it would be a pretty significant endeavor in environmental impact.
Right, it is an environmental impact, and then the endeavor to cross it, that huge gorge.
This is a much better picture. I didn't see this one with the stream buffer. Okay.
So, and as you can tell from this, while there are other parcels that are undeveloped right now, it, there are no other crossings right now. You look at that easternmost side of all those properties right now.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Atcock.
I had a question about minor modification number three, which makes sense, about the payment in lieu for the road. But Mr. Tang mentioned in his testimony about the willingness to give construction easements at the time the road was built. So, my question is, is it appropriate to include in that minor modification that payment in lieu would be accepted along with construction easements at the time of road construction?
Yes, I believe it would.
Because I would make that suggestion, that we do that. We've done it before. If you think about Western Parkway, and we approved some residential in there, that's in there with office and commercial and everything, and we said at such time that the traffic load reaches X, then the light would be put in, or then the left turn lane would be added, or whatever. So, we've done those contingent things before. It seems like it would, they should be bundled, if the applicant would offer that.
The applicant's nodding in the affirmative direction. Other questions?
That's good enough. Your nod is good.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Yurhov.
Just a comment on the tree. I mentioned in the last case that if it was only one tree, I probably wouldn't be making any fuss.
You lied.
No. This is just one tree on over 90 acres, which is kind of amazing, and with good justification, so I'm not making a fuss.
Good to hear.
Man of his word.
If there are no objections, we'll move to close the public comment and portion of the hearing, and ask Mr. Grattis to help us with the motions necessary.
Yes, and I've also had assistance from the Assistant Town Attorney, who might be a little bit more helpful than I am, so I'll ask her to approach if that's okay.
We put a new piece of paper, I think, at your seats, just to recognize that we had the third minor modification, because that wasn't included in your staff report. And then I heard Ms. Atcock's statements just a minute ago, so if there is an inclination to add a condition on one of the minor modification approvals, we can all kind of make sure we're in agreement on the wording as that happens. So, it's a normal approval. We are doing the two, unless you want to break them apart, we were going to just do everything together, the two separate site plans, so that you can make a motion to approve all or individual of the modification requests, and you could add conditions if you deem that to be necessary.
I had a question. Procedurally, y'all would just die if I didn't ask the process question right. Would the applicant be comfortable with wording crafted here at the table tonight about the construction easements versus, you know, often you go craft the language to make sure it's 100% legally correct and bring it back?
I think as long...
I don't want to hold you up.
As long as we understand what you're asking for, then Mr. Barron and I typically make sure we all agree on the language of the resolution, so I just want to make sure...
So, we can be general in that?
Yes, you can be general, but I want to make sure I understand the intent of what you're proposing as the condition, and then we'll finalize the wording before the resolution comes back to you.
Okay. I'd be willing to make a motion.
Please.
I don't hear a lot of disagreement about, I'll preface my motion by saying, I don't hear a lot of disagreement about the request for these minor modifications. So, I'm going to go for the motion to approve all of them. And I'm looking for little head nods. Thank you, Mr. France.
Motion second.
So, I would say, for the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the minor modification requests made by the applicant, as the requests meet all of the approval criteria, the applicable sections of the LDO. offering, or conferring, construction easements at the time of payment in lieu.
Second. There's a motion, a second, discussion.
Does that seem?
Can we just stop for a moment?
Massage that a little bit?
Well, to talk about the timing of when the construction easements would be provided, because I'm not sure anyone will know exactly the extent of the necessary construction easement.
I'm fine with the timing, it's the intent, you know what I'm getting at.
So to confirm, at the testimony earlier, that the applicant was willing to provide construction easements at the necessary point in the future.
Yeah, I would assume that that would occur at the time the right-of-way is dedicated, and as long as that's part of the process, I think that's a condition.
Come to think of it, he did mention right-of-way at that time. I think that was our understanding, is that the appropriate time the construction easement would be granted. So I'll amend, massage, or whatever the proper word would be, my motion to reflect what Ms. Glover has said.
I'll amend my second. All right. Any further discussion? And council is good with that. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we'll close this public.
I'd be happy to do the motion for the subdivision plan. For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed subdivision plans for Montville Phase One and Two, with conditions as stated below, as they meet all of the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2. L or I, I never can tell.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, with the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following. One, the applicant must satisfactorily address any remaining Development Review Committee comments on the master plan set, submitted for signature. Two, developer must complete all obligations as listed in staff report TF-15-031.
Here's a motion.
Second.
And a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll close the public hearing portion, thank you very much. And we'll now move to our final quasi-judicial public hearing. Canterbury Downs, an overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. We'll pause just a moment to allow these individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And council will pause from saying anything or doing anything until this has been completed. I'll now ask councilmembers if they've had any site visits, ex parte communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, close relationship to a affected person to disclose, starting on my left, Mr. Yaroff.
I have not, sir.
Mr. Bush. Mrs. Bush. I'm speaking so fast.
I have not. Neither is Mr. Bush.
I have not. Mr. Smith. Mrs. Robinson. Ms. Adcock.
No, sir.
All right, very good. Any disclosure, since we've heard disclosures from councilmembers, I'd invite anyone to the podium who's been sworn in to speak if you have an objection to a councilmember's participation. Seeing no one, I'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing and allow Mr. Hales of our staff to introduce this hearing. Mr. Hales.
Thank you again, council. As you indicated, the next hearing on tonight's agenda is a request by Boulder Engineering on behalf of the developers and property owners for development of approximately 28 lot, 28-lot subdivision on approximately 15 acres located at the intersection of Farm Pond Road and Davis Drive. That site is bounded on the east by Davis Drive and on the south by Farm Pond Road. Located to the west are large residential lots located along Farm Pond Road and a county subdivision, and to the north is the Stonecrest subdivision located within Cary. Davis Drive is identified in the comprehensive transportation plan as a major thoroughfare, and Farm Pond Road is designated as a future collector running east-west, over to Howell Road and over to Holt. There are no current transit facilities or planned transit facilities for this site. The Parks, Recreation, Cultural Facilities Master Plan identifies a 10-foot street-side trail running along both Davis Drive north-south and along Farm Pond Road east-west. There are two existing farm ponds on the site which are affected by, are subject to riparian buffers, they're located at the northern end of the site. Land use plan calls for low-density residential. The current zoning, as adopted by council last year, was residential eight conditional Site currently is predominantly vacant, there is an existing house on the property and some agricultural outbuildings. Most of the property has been cleared, there's a small patch of pine woodland in the southwestern corner, as mentioned before, the two farm ponds located along the northern side of the site. This is just a shot of the existing site as it stands, and you can see a large oak tree located in the front yard, which we'll talk about in a little more detail later in the So as mentioned, the applicant is requesting approval of a 28-lot subdivision on this parcel. Access would be provided along Davis Drive with a connection north to Gravel Brook Drive extending from the Stonecrest subdivision. They are not proposing connections to Farm Pond Road or to the west, so those portions of the site would be served by cul-de-sacs. They are proposing to use the existing farm ponds, modify them to serve as stormwater BMPs for the site, so they would remain predominantly unchanged, somewhat changed in shape, but in roughly the same location. They're proposing to widen Davis Drive, with the exception of the median, which we'll talk about slightly later. They are proposing to provide the 10-foot street-side trail required along Davis Drive that is located in a 30-foot streetscape, which is a request for reduction from the standards we'll talk about a little bit later. The buffer along Farm Pond Road is the required 30-foot type-A opaque buffer required by the ordinance, and per the zoning condition, there's a 20-foot type-B buffer along the lots in the Farm Pond subdivision. As mentioned in the staff report, there are a number of minor modifications associated, just seven to be exact, and we'll go through each of those in a little more detail. First being a modification to the connectivity index. That index is a ratio of street nodes, or street lengths to street nodes. As you can see in this diagram, street lengths identified by the purple numbers, there are five, street nodes identified by the blue circles, which there are also five, and five divided by five is 1.0, which is less than the 1.2 required by the ordinance. The applicant has proposed to make no vehicular connection to the west. As part of the connectivity index waiver, they're required to provide pedestrian connections to the adjacent subdivisions. In order to solve, or to satisfy that requirement, they are proposing an access easement going to the west with no physical improvements. As mentioned in the staff report, that's somewhat problematic, and we'll get into more detail a little later. Likewise, they're proposing no vehicular connection to Farm Pond Road, however, they are providing the physical sidewalk connection out to Farm Pond Road right-of-way. As mentioned earlier, Farm Pond Road is identified as a future collector street in the town's CTP. The applicant is not proposing to make any of those improvements required by the comprehensive transportation plan, they are proposing a payment in lieu of those improvements instead, providing instead just the streetscape buffer and the pedestrian connection mentioned earlier stub to the property line. There's a 50-foot streetscape type-A required along thoroughfares for residential development. The applicant is proposing instead to provide a 30-foot type-A streetscape along Davis Drive. The red dotted line in this diagram shows the 50-foot limit, and then the yellow circled areas are what's actually being provided, 30 feet. There is, there are five champion trees on the site, the applicant is proposing to remove one of those, the 53-inch willow oak, which you can see somewhat in the picture earlier. This is located in front of the house and will be within or just outside the curb line of the widened Davis Drive, per the CTP widening. And finally, the applicant is proposing to neither construct nor make a payment in lieu for the Davis Drive median, the median required in Davis Drive as part of the four-lane median divided section. This concludes staff's initial presentation, and we'll be back later in the process to give a little more professional insight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is the streetscape normally 50 feet and it's going down to 30 feet, or 30?
It's normally 50, along Davis Drive would normally be 50 feet, that's what the LDO requires, they're proposing 30 feet. Correct.
Okay, and they are proposing to build the sidewalk, but not the road on Farm Pond?
They're proposing to make no improvements on Farm Pond at all.
None at all, not even the sidewalk?
Not even the sidewalk. Yes, the sidewalk coming from the cul-de-sac now to it.
Yeah, they'll make it down to it and touch it, but they were not doing the sidewalk?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
This time, we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Members of council, and Mr. Mayor, my name is Keith Burns, I practice with Morris Manning and Martin in our Research Triangle Park office. As you've heard, this is a 28-lot subdivision, it sits just at the edge of the Apex-Cary boundary. The lot count that we've proposed is slightly less than the maximum density. Much of what you have heard in terms of the minor modifications that we request are driven by our attempts to honor commitments made to the adjoining neighbors by the prior owner of this property. And many of the things that we've requested minor modifications are for the neighbors and not necessarily for the benefit of the applicant, and that is very much driving the process this evening. I would point out again, with respect to connectivity, the connection here, which would, if it were installed, run pretty much into the back of that horse barn, or there into the training ring at the back, that's something that the neighbors oppose, that would not have any negative impact on the site plan, but again, it's something the neighbors oppose. Likewise, a connection down into Farm Pond Road would be something that would have no particular adverse impact on the site, though it would create some potential, in the applicant's view, for some unmitigated traffic impacts along Davis Drive and at that intersection. Davis Drive returns to two lanes here, and that is just into the edge of Apex, it is a place that the applicant is unable to provide additional improvement to Davis. And then, in addition to that, the Davis Drive streetscape widening is a function of two things. First, along Davis Drive on this side, you'll see that's the CSX Railway. Because CSX sits there, all of the Davis Drive improvement has to be done on the applicant's site, none of it can be shared by the site across the road, forcing all of that improvement and all of that dedication to Davis Drive. And then, so we're pinched on that eastern side of the site. On the western side of the site, the zoning requires larger lots, larger lots, and you'll see that those lots are much larger than the lots on the eastern side along Davis Drive. That combined with the buffer that sits outside the lots, that the buffer here is behind the lots and not a part of the lots, that pinches us on this side, and as a result, causes us to give up a substantial amount of land, and we'd like to be able to make up some of that, which is, the substantial amount's effectively 40 feet across the entire site, and we'd like to be able to make up a piece of that in the buffer area. That is, that buffer is designed to be opaque to the regular standard. The tree that was mentioned would be in the Davis Drive asphalt area or immediately adjacent to it. We'd be delighted not to have to expand Davis Drive, but if we're going to do it, and we were of course not complaining about doing it, but we will need to remove that tree. And then finally, the Davis Drive median is, in the applicant's view, an issue having to do with the constructibility of that median. There is just very limited amount of taper length going from here at the north, where Davis Drive will be more narrow than what the applicant will construct, down to two lanes, and engineering standards, as you'll hear testimony in a moment, prevent that sort of taper with a meaningful center turn lane. And so, with that, I'll call two witnesses tonight to talk about this, and I've seen a number of the neighbors come forward to testify. First, Landon Lovelace, the engineer for this project, will take you through all of the approval criteria, and will also give you a little insight into the, a little further insight into the minor modifications. And then finally, Will Lectworth, who is a traffic engineer, will talk about the traffic engineering issues that arise here. With that, Mr. Lovelace, would you, right there, would you introduce yourself to council, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Landon Lovelace, I'm a professional engineer in North Carolina. I've been practicing civil engineering for 14 years, the last 11 years here in North Carolina, with the majority of my work in Cary. I've worked on over 100 projects, with probably 25 of them here in Cary. I've got good working relationships with DRC and other staff members. I've got a BS in civil engineering from Michigan State University, and I'm a licensed North Carolina professional engineer.
I'd like to turn your attention now to the site plan. Can you describe that for us generally, please?
Sure, we're proposing a 28-lot subdivision. A lot of this stuff, either Kevin or Keith have already covered. We've got a larger lot, four, five larger lots proposed on the western side to help with the density transition from the existing Farm Pond subdivision, with a more dense lot as we get over to Davis Drive, that transitioned to even more density on the other side of Davis Drive. The larger lot portion of the subdivision was a direct result of conversations during neighborhood meetings and public hearings at the rezoning stage. Again, as Keith mentioned, we're trying to keep prior commitments to the neighbors.
Can you describe for me, please, the process of developing the site plan, a number of versions involved?
Sure, so, with the original developer, we obviously worked through a number of site plans, we probably went through two or three different sketch plans, and then, as we went through neighborhood meetings and public hearing process and got input from staff and councilmembers and the adjacent neighbors, we ultimately modified the plan to come up with a plan that we thought not only meets the town of Cary's standards, but also makes and keeps the commitments to the adjacent neighbors who did not want connections or stubs to their properties. And it kind of honors the density step-down or transition from the larger lots that are in the existing Farm Pond subdivision to more density fronting on Davis Drive.
So, did you say that the site plan was modified based on input from the neighbors and from staff?
It was in the planning stage. We've also made modifications subsequent to, submitted to the town in review, for various things, to help save some of the champion trees and things like that, but the lot size and the density step-down was something that was modified prior to our first submitted based on planning concerns during, or concerns that popped up during neighborhood meetings and the rezoning.
And except for the minor modifications that I mentioned and that Kevin mentioned before me, does the plan comply with the ordinance?
It does. It complies with Chapter Seven and Eight of the Land Development Ordinance, again, except for the allowable minor modifications, sorry, guys, except for the allowable minor modifications that we're requesting.
So, council's going to be called upon to make some findings that are required by the ordinance, I'd like to turn your attention to those, and we'll come back to the minor modifications in just a moment. Does the plan protect other property from the potential adverse effects of the proposed development?
It does, and it does so in a number of ways. As was mentioned previously, we provide a 20-foot buffer to the adjacent existing residential parcels to the west and to the north. A 20-foot buffer is typical there, but as a volunteer zoning condition, we actually volunteered that that buffer be outside of the lot, as opposed to on top of the lot. In addition, we're providing a buffer along Davis Drive and the Farm Pond. We're also utilizing the existing. We're also utilizing the existing agricultural ponds on-site as stormwater features. It does a number of things. It helps us maintain the existing natural feel of the site. By having the stormwater features in the same location as they were previously, it also helps mimic the existing hydrology and can reduce impacts other places on the site where we would otherwise have to grade to put in a stormwater pond.
So, you mentioned buffers. I want to go back to that for just a second. I think you said there's a 20-foot buffer along the western edge of the property, along the Farm Pond Road residences, and then there is a buffer along the Farm Pond Road to the south, is that correct?
That's correct.
And are both of those 20-foot type B buffers?
That is correct.
And then is there another buffer there along Davis Drive?
There is.
And that's the 30-foot buffer that we discussed earlier, is that correct?
Correct, and it's planted to type A standards.
And then what about along the northern edge of the property?
The northern edge of the property also has a 20-foot type, I'm sorry, maybe we misspoke earlier, the 20-foot type B buffer is on the western and northern side of the property.
And then what about the buffer to the south on Farm Pond?
Farm Pond is a 30-foot type A buffer.
Okay, thank you. So, next I'd like to turn your attention to the harmony of the plan with the adjoining properties. Is there harmony there?
There is. The plan is in accordance with the Cary Land Use Plan, which calls for this area to be low-density residential, which is typically an allowable 1 to 3 dwelling units per acre. As designed, the project sits at 1.9 dwelling units per acre. As far, as far as comparing this project to the adjacent uses, with the previously mentioned density step down from the larger lots in the Farm Pond, as well as the density up front, that ties in well with the existing lots in Stonecrest, we're keeping the same look and feel and vernacular of the existing homes while stepping the transition of density down.
And what's the development across Davis Drive from the property behind the railroad track?
Those are single-family townhomes. It's much more dense.
I'd like to turn your attention now to the traffic. Does the plan provide safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists?
It does.
Describe that for me, please.
Sure, the design is in accordance with All Town of Cary's design standards as far as right-of-way and roadway width go. We've got internal sidewalks. We've got the 10-foot multi-use paths or street-side trail along Davis Drive. Though we are not, though we're proposing a fee in lieu for the trail along Farm Pond Road, we have provided the additional right-of-way, and we have set up the design of the berm and the landscape buffer there to accommodate the future widening, if that should ever happen.
Adequate site distances and site triangles?
That's correct.
And can you describe, please, briefly, the improvements along Davis Drive?
So, the cross-section through here is a major thoroughfare. It would be a 78-foot back-to-back and 100-foot right-of-way, and typically, the developer would be responsible, obviously, to build it to the full comprehensive transportation plan section. Since the CSX railroad is directly adjacent across the street, as you mentioned previously, the full width of the widening, which is ultimately four lanes and a median, comes onto our project. We've also offered one full median-divided full-movement access onto Davis Drive.
Does the plan provide safe ingress and egress for emergency service vehicles?
It does. Again, the plan is designed in accordance with Town of Cary standards as far as center-line radius, cul-de-sac radius, corner radii. In addition to the one entrance that we've got proposed to Davis Drive, there's another entrance up the connection to Gravel Brook Drive, which is Dolomite, and it's about 800 feet to the north of our entrance.
And does the plan provide for mitigation of traffic congestion impacts?
Yeah, we feel with the widening of Davis Drive, as well as the entrance provided to Davis Drive, that it does, and I'll defer to Will Lechtworth, the traffic engineer, for further comment on that.
Thank you. I want to turn your attention now to the minor modifications that we discussed earlier, and want to start with the connectivity index. Council's heard, I think, twice tonight what a connectivity index is, and so I think we can skip right to what connections we're providing here.
Sure. So, the connections that we are providing with the subdivision is a, an extension of the existing Gravel Brook Court, as well as a full-access entrance road out to Davis Drive.
And when you say full access, do you mean left-in, left-out, right-in, right-out, both?
That's correct.
And with respect to Gravel Brook, does that connect then up to Dolomite and from there out to Davis?
It does.
And there are certain connections that have not been provided. Can you describe where those would be and why they've not been provided?
Sure, the previously discussed connections, one is the stub to the west, as well as the stub down to Farm Pond.
So, with respect to the stub to the west, why is that not being included?
Again, this is to honor commitments previously made at the time of neighborhood meetings and public hearings to the adjacent owners and their concerns on connecting to their developed subdivision. It's basically a 10-lot subdivision with eight existing homes, large lots, expensive homes, equestrian uses.
And then the stub to the south out to Farm Pond, why is that not being included?
Again, it's to honor commitments to the folks on Farm Pond Road, as well as the fact that at this point, it's not needed to mitigate any of the traffic, the small amount of traffic that's generated by the site.
And if there were a connection to Farm Pond, would that create traffic impacts that we could not mitigate, that the applicant could not mitigate?
There's a potential, and I'll leave the specifics again to Mr. Lechtworth, but again, the widening of Davis goes from five lanes up to the north and through our entrance, and it tapers back down to an existing two-lane section. Kevin, can we pop to the overall aerial?
70, I think.
Thank you, sir. So, the existing Davis Drive is a two-lane road, and the house directly to the south of Farm Pond Road, there's limited right-of-way, and the house is very close to the road. So, in essence, we have no room or access to that additional right-of-way that might be required to otherwise make a left-hand turn onto Farm Pond Road. So, by making the stub out to Farm Pond Road, it could potentially create a traffic hazard for people wanting to turn left and to get to the lots that are further in the southern portion of the subdivision.
So, what is the connectivity index as proposed here?
As proposed, it's 1.0.
And what is it if you consider the access from Gravel Brook into Farm Pond, excuse me, into Dolomite?
So, if we, if we take the extension of this, includes Stonecrest, which is where Gravel Brook Court is an extension of, with the additional entrance out onto Davis Drive, it's 1.22.
And is there pedestrian connectivity being provided?
There is.
Where is that?
So, we've got, as mentioned earlier, we've got a sidewalk stub between lots out to Farm Pond Road, as well as a pedestrian access easement that was stubbed to the west.
So, is this minor modification consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
It is.
And does it result in less visual impact or more effective environmental or open space preservation?
It does, and part of the ways that it does is it allows for a full buffer on the western property boundary adjacent to the existing Farm Pond residence, as well as a full uninterrupted type A streetscape buffer along Farm Pond Road.
Thank you. I want to shift your attention now and talk with you about the payment in lieu for Farm Pond Road. Can you describe the improvements that would otherwise be required by the ordinance, please?
Sure, Farm Pond is considered a collector's street per the Cary Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which is a 35-foot back-to-back and a 60-foot right-of-way. The existing road out there, oh, excuse me, and a 70-foot right-of-way. The existing road out there is a 20- to 22-foot and a 60-foot right-of-way. It's not curb and gutter, it's a ditch section. So, in essence, the widening that would have to occur for us to build our half is about five feet or so of pavement with the curb and gutter.
And would that five feet of pavement benefit anyone at the moment?
Not in my professional opinion.
What does Farm Pond Road serve now?
So, Farm Pond Road currently serves an existing large lot development. There's 10 lots with eight homes. The homes range in value from $600,000 up. There are two of those lots that are not developed right now.
And have the neighbors objected to any improvement of Farm Pond Road?
They have.
And is the minor modification we've requested specifically the payment in lieu consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
It is.
And would it result in less visual impact or more effective environmental or open space preservation?
It would, and it would potentially postpone any additional grading disturbance in previous area until which time it can be determined whether or not Farm Pond would actually be widened and continued all the way through.
Thank you. I want to turn your attention now to the minor modification regarding the Davis Drive streetscape width. Do we have an exhibit there for that?
We do.
So, I'd like to ask you first, what is the streetscape required by the ordinance?
So, the ordinance requires, typically requires, a 50-foot type A streetscape.
And so the area shown on this exhibit where it says streetscape 30-foot type A, that would by ordinance requirement be 50 feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what is, what is proposed by the applicant here?
We're proposing a 30-foot type A streetscape in addition to a 10-foot landscape easement on the back of lots adjacent to it.
And does that easement area, or strike, excuse me, does that streetscape area include a berm?
It does. With the meandered 10-foot greenway that's in the path, there's berming on both the front and back, as depicted in this cross-section rendering.
And what's the height of that berm?
The berm in the front varies between two and three feet, and the berm in the back would vary between three and five feet, depending on how the lot adjacent to it. Most of the lots back on the southern portion of the subdivision, some of these lots here sit a little bit below Davis Drive. So, although the front of the berm is maybe three feet tall, the back of the lot would sit down a couple of feet as well.
And what's the planned opacity of that?
The buffer is planned to be planted to the type A requirements per the Development Ordinance.
And so why is it that the applicant has requested a reduction in the streetscape buffer?
So, to go back to what we previously talked about from the road widening perspective, because of the location of the CSX railroad and the existing condition on Davis Drive, we've got to widen it from two lanes out to four lanes or five lanes, and it has to be fully on our site. So, the additional right-of-way generally would be about 20 feet of dedication. We're having to dedicate 43, plus or minus 43 and a half feet, as well as do the full widening onto our project.
So, effectively, the applicant's being asked to give up 23 feet of right-of-way that ordinarily the applicant would not be, give up, is that?
That's correct. And in addition, as a volunteer zoning condition, we put the 20-foot buffer, type B buffer on the western portion of the site outside of the lots. So, when you take those two together, as you mentioned before, we're basically losing about 43 feet in width of developable area.
Now, the exhibit you have up there shows a 10-foot greenway. Can you describe for me what the greenway is?
So, per the Parkson Greenway Master Plan, there's a 10-foot multi-use path that's called out. It also calls that a meander in and out of the streetscape buffer and the right-of-way.
And is there any easement area on either side of that path?
There is. It's a 10-foot trail within a 20-foot easement.
So, is that then a total in of 20 feet, 10-foot trail and five feet either side?
That's correct.
I want to ask you now, is this minor modification consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
It is.
And does it relieve practical difficulties related to development of the site?
It certainly does.
And what are those difficulties?
The difficulties are with the additional 43 plus or minus feet of developable width based on the additional right-of-way dedication and the volunteered type V buffer of the western lots. It would basically, if we had to do the additional 20 feet, it would be a loss of lots and would basically kill this project. I know there's been a history of rezoning with a lot more density than we're coming in and showing now, and I feel that this is probably the, anything less than this zoning, I don't know that anybody's ever going to make it work from a numbers perspective.
I want to turn your attention now to the request regarding the removal of the champion tree. How many healthy champion trees were there on the site?
So, originally, we found seven champion trees after a report and review by a certified arborist, but we found that two of them were dead or dying, diseased. So, there was a total of five viable champion trees on site.
And have you been able to save all but one of those?
We have. We saved all but the one that's out in the Davis Drive widening.
And is there any alternative to removing this tree that's in Davis Drive widening?
The only potential alternative to removing the tree would be to not widen Davis Drive to the full section as shown in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
And is this minor modification consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
It is.
And does it relieve practical difficulties regarding development?
It does.
So, I'd like to conclude with the Davis Drive median. Can you describe, please, the nature of Davis Drive as it will be constructed along the front of the site?
Sure. So, again, back in preliminary design of the site, we had multiple meetings with both the NC DOT and Town of Cary transportation staff to come up with solutions to a complex spot. We're taking a portion of Davis Drive, we're just north of the site, adjacent to the Stonecrest subdivision. It's widened, but it's not widened out to its full section. We have the railroad here, and then Farm Pond Road basically serves as the dividing line between Cary and Apex. And Davis Drive, south of there is a two-lane ribbon pavement with a ditch section. So, we worked back and forth, again, with both DOT and town staff to find a way to get the full width widening, which allows the town to get the full pavement section down right now, but also find a way to taper back the section that would make it safe and physically able for cars to drive, go from a section as it is to the north, tie it back down to the two-lane section to the south.
So, is it four lanes to the north, five lanes in front of the property, and two lanes to the south, is that correct?
That's the general gist of it, yep.
And is there room in that section in front of the property for a full median?
There is not, per the ASHTO.
What is ASHTO?
ASHTO is the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. It's the basic governing board that creates and sets roadway standards. Typically, most DOTs and Town of Cary standards are based off of ASHTO standards. And they have a required lane shift taper, which means if you're, we drive through construction sites all the time, and there's a quick jog in lanes as they're doing work. It's a way to safely transition from a certain width of pavement down to another width of pavement. And basically, in order to transition from the width of this required pavement down to the two lanes to the south, the taper length would be back in this area somewhere, somewhere around 1,700 feet. So, it would, it would pass the entrance road, basically making actual physically built median there impossible to construct while still having a safe way for traffic to transition back down to two lanes.
Is this minor modification consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
It is.
And does it relieve practical difficulties of developing the site?
Yes.
And are those practical difficulties the lane taper you just described?
They are.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd call Will Lechtworth to conclude. Would you introduce yourself to council, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Will Lechtworth. I'm a traffic engineer and transportation planner with the engineering firm Volker, located at 5540 Centerview Drive in Raleigh.
Can you describe your education and training for us?
Yes, sir. I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in civil engineering from North Carolina State University. I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina, South Carolina, Florida, and Hawaii, and I've been a traffic engineer and transportation planner for over 10 years and done roughly 100 or so traffic impact analyses all over the US, including some over here in the Town of Cary, with a previous firm I was at under the town's Traffic Engineering on Call, Traffic Impact Study on Call, excuse me.
And have you worked with this particular site to assess traffic impacts?
Yes, sir. I was asked to look at the traffic impacts of a connection to Farm Pond Road.
And what did you conclude about the number of trips that would likely be generated by this property?
This property, based on 28 units, will generate approximately 29 vehicles in the AM peak hour in a one-hour span and about 33 vehicles in the PM peak hour. As it relates to connection to Farm Pond Road, the key numbers are really how many trips are leaving in the morning, that's about 22, and how many trips are coming in in the afternoon. afternoon, it's about 21.
So, as an example, in the morning during an, an hour, say from seven to eight, you would expect 22 cars during that hour to leave the project through Misty Mountain Way?
Yes, sir. And a portion of those would obviously turn right, and a portion of those would obviously turn left on Davis Drive.
Based on that traffic count or traffic projection, what sort of recommendations do you have regarding modifications and connections?
My findings were that a connection to Farm Pond Road will serve a very small amount of traffic. When I look at the site layout and consider that approximately half of the folks will be turning left on Davis Drive, will be coming from the north, and, and half will be coming from the south on Davis Drive, what I look at is what of those lots would use a connection to Farm Pond Road? So, you know, you have about 11 cars coming from the south, and if I can get the pointer to come up here. Well, if you'll take a look at the, the plan in front of you, the lots right around that southern cul-de-sac, the folks that live in those lots are the ones that are most likely to go ahead and turn left at Farm Pond Road and then turn right into the, into the subdivision. So, you're probably talking two or three or four cars in a peak hour that would enter and/or possibly leave via the Farm Pond Road connection. So, in the short term, in the absence of an extension of Farm Pond Road that's currently in the comprehensive transportation plan, but it is not in the 10-year CIP, the, the connection to Farm Pond Road as it relates to the traffic from this subdivision will be very lightly used.
And if there were a connection to Farm Pond Road, does that create the potential for unmitigated traffic impacts?
There will, will be some traffic impacts, obviously, at a stop sign on a busy road such as Davis Drive. Any additional cars are going to create additional traffic impacts. Does it rise to the level where you would consider something like a signal? Absolutely, it doesn't. But if you allow people to turn left at Farm Pond Road, where Davis Drive is a two-lane roadway, they'll be stopping traffic on Davis Drive. The people turning left out of Farm Pond Road don't have any refuge area, so they have to cross those lanes on Davis Drive. So, in my professional opinion, it, it is certainly preferable to have people go up to Misty Mountain Way where there's a left-turn lane to turn left into the site. And then if they're turning left out of the site, they've got that hatched median area as a refuge if they need it. Obviously, we don't encourage that, but we all know people do that, so there's a little area there if, if it's needed.
So, to make sure I understand, if a car were heading north on Davis Drive and trying to turn into Farm Pond Road, that car's going to back up traffic behind them potentially on Davis Drive, is that what you're telling us?
Yes, sir. Anyone that stops to turn left on the Farm Pond Road will stop the traffic behind them on Davis Drive, yes, sir.
And someone coming out of Farm Pond Road and turning left has to cross two lanes of Davis Drive, I think is what you're telling us, whereas coming out of Misty Mountain, they may only have to cross one?
Well, they still have to cross two lanes, but they have that median refuge area. If there are people northbound on Davis Drive, if there's, if there's a vehicle coming, they can kind of pull into that hatched area if they, if they have to.
Thank you. I want to turn your attention to a couple of the quasi-judicial findings that council will have to make. First of all, does the plan provide for safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists?
Yes, sir.
And does, are the designs consistent with industry standards?
Yes, sir.
With site distances and site triangles?
Yes, sir.
And does the plan, plan provide for safe ingress and egress for emergency vehicles?
Yes, sir. Particularly with two connections sitting in the subdivision, there's, there's adequate connectivity for emergency vehicles.
And does the plan provide mitigation for traffic?
Yes, sir. It's currently designed, particularly with the left-turn lane into, into Misty Mountain Way, I believe it does, yes, sir.
And you've heard testimony previously about the minor modification request regarding connectivity. Does the plan as presented provide adequate connectivity?
Yes, sir. In the short term, it certainly does. In the long term, if Farm Pond Road is extended, I think it's important to note that a connection to Farm Pond Road will certainly serve on a more regional level. Again, when you look at the amount of traffic we're talking about from this subdivision, you're talking about a very small amount of traffic. Even if you were to go so far as to include the traffic from the Stonecrest subdivision, that would obviously have access to Farm Pond Road and then access to the west. That housing development has, I counted about 57 homes in that, so you're talking another 37 cars leaving in the morning, of which only a very small portion would be expected to use Farm Pond Road. So, as currently designed, this subdivision, I believe both in the short and the long term, does provide adequate connectivity for the amount of traffic volume that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that concludes the, the evidence that we'd offer. Our case in chief, I, I would submit to you that you've heard testimony now that the applicant meets each of the criteria you'll be called upon to, to answer as it relates to the quasi-judicial hearing, and it also suggests to you that you've heard evidence to support each of the minor modification requests. I'd also highlight again that a number of those requests are being made for the benefit of surrounding owners and are things that are not particularly of tremendous or critical importance to the, to the applicant. Certainly, the applicant has a strong interest in the, the modification related to the streetscape buffer, because without that, there will be a significant and meaningful impact on the lots that it will be allowed to, to develop, and certainly with respect to the removal of the champion tree. My witnesses and I are happy to answer your questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know at this time you normally ask if there's other folks in support of the request, but in order to kind of keep things connected, I'd like to ask your permission to ask a couple of questions of the witnesses that just testified?
Please.
If that's all right? I mean, I'm not sure who would be the best person to answer, so I'll just ask my question, and then, and you all can come up. But Mr. Lovelace, I believe, was addressing the Davis Drive widening issue in the, the request to not provide a median, but I was wondering if you could address why the applicant is not proposing to provide the payment in lieu for the median? Or if someone could address that?
So, we're requesting not to pay the fee in lieu for the median, because as we mentioned earlier, typically, the developer would have to widen half of the road and dedicate half of the right-of-way. And in this case, due to the existing CSX railroad, we're actually having to widen the full five lanes and, and give the additional 23 and a half feet of right-of-way at a significant cost. Preliminary cost estimates for this road is, is over a million dollars. That doesn't take into account the additional right-of-way dedication. So, when we're talking about a $70,000 or $80,000 fee in lieu for the median, we're requesting to not pay that because we are widening the full extent of, of the widening onto our property.
And are, is your client planning to ask for TDF credits for right-of-way dedication and, and construction as well in connection with this project?
We are.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. This time, I'll invite speakers who have been sworn in and wish to speak in support of the application to approach the podium for speaker, please. Anyone at all?
Support.
Of the application. I'd invite cross-examination, additional cross-examinations of witnesses who have testified in support of the request. Okay? Moving on, we'll open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
My name is Raymond Davis. I'm a resident of Farm Pond Road. We've been here before. We saw you all, I think, look at my records, December of last year. First of all, I appreciate the work the gentleman's done on the project, but I would like for you all to know, this is the first time we've seen these slides or this proposal. We've seen nothing about the, the traffic, the median, the five lane, the four lanes that goes to five lanes to two lanes, where we leave Farm Pond every morning. We haven't seen that before. We haven't seen anything with a sidewalk proposed. Matter of fact, the previous owner, the two lots that were adjoining Farm Pond, which is addressed 5900 Farm Pond Road, had proposed two lots there instead of three, with no outlet on Farm Pond and no sidewalk. I'm glad, and, you know, I know that Raleigh is the city of oaks, but I didn't realize Cary was the city of champion trees. And obviously, it is. I would also ask you in your, in the site plan, if you can bring that back, in the lots at the western part, go back to that one right there. There is possibly, in this area here, some champion trees. Your definition of champion trees is anything 30 inches in caliper or greater? Also, is that right?
Depends on the tree.
Depends on the type.
Oh, it's 32? It's moved up?
Depends on the type of tree.
What types?
Well, not gum.
I'm with her.
We don't walk around with that.
I'm with her with the go. But there are some trees there. And of course, I'm, I'm assuming all of those trees will come out, but there's some, also an issue there. There's been disposal from that chicken house that you see in those trees of horse manure. It's been a horse barn for 28 years, and a lot of those trees are dead. I don't know if there's a EPA ordinance that requires the removal of that or not, but it's something to consider. You, we talked about Davis Drive's classified Town Comprehensive Transportation Plan, Section 7.2.4, and it does require a 50-foot type A streetscape. They're asking for 30. It's going to be difficult to get out of Davis Drive, I mean, out of Farm Pond Road if there's not a turn lane somewhere closer to the development. I think that's a concern. Also, in the borders that join the buffers, it was purported, proposed that it is a 20-foot buffer to the joining owners, of which I'm one of them, but it also was proposed with the previous owner that it was a planted, proposed landscaped buffer. Maybe, maybe, maybe the previous owner didn't explain that to the current owners, but we had agreed upon that. I won't spend too much time on traffic, and I won't spend too much time on the impact of schools with the development. Obviously, we want to keep our place as we've had it. We don't own the property. We were never offered the opportunity to buy it. We don't own it, we can't control it. I just ask your consideration to us as landowners, and as previously we discussed with our due diligence, and the covenants that we bought some many years ago that has never come into play. I can understand time removes some of that. Appreciate your consideration for it. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Silverstein, help me with this testimony. We're, we're seeming to go back to ideas and comments from the public hearing on the rezoning. What testimony should we be hearing now?
The, the only testimony that you can consider now would be testimony that's relevant to the matters that are before you. That is, the modifications that are requested and then the, the site plan in this for the, for this application.
So, specifically, we're talking about connectivity, champion trees, and Davis Drive?
Streetscape buffer.
Streetscape buffer.
And, and it's also inappropriate to consider hearsay testimony from what might have happened with a, a prior owner, unless that's part of the record.
Is it appropriate or isn't?
It's inappropriate.
Inappropriate.
Unless it's part of a record that's presented to you.
Okay. Very good. And I apologize to the speakers that are coming forward. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, a lot different from a public hearing on a rezoning, so please limit your comments to the items we're looking at. And having said that, I want to invite the next speaker opposed to this request.
My name is Jim Sherrill. I'm also resident of Farm Pond Road. I'd like to pass this out to council. I was trying to send it electronically, was told I could not, had to use paper, so this will take just a second. Okay, I'm going to speak to the connectivity to Farm Pond Road for the pedestrian walkway. Our concern would be a liability issue. As previously stated, it's the first time we've seen this, but my address is 6005, so I've already talked to insurance people. If there's a connectivity pedestrian from this subdivision onto Farm Pond Road, it opens up me and my other neighbors as far as liability. I have a pond down there. I would have to put up no trespassing signs every 100 to 125 feet. I would also have to put up no swimming signs and stuff like that. So, that is, the one main issue I have would be, this was never proposed from the beginning, is just cut out the connectivity, pedestrian connectivity to Farm Pond Road. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
May I ask Mr. Silverstein a question?
Sure.
Mr. Silverstein, is it appropriate for us to consider the verbal report of an individual's insurance agent? As just presented to us? I just wanted to get that out there.
Okay. Next speaker, please. Anyone else speak in opposition?
I appreciate your time, mayor and council. However, I'm not involved with the connectivity.
Could you give us your name, please?
Rachel Babnik. I am a resident of Cary. I have been for 14 years. I live in an adjacent subdivision called Sherwood Greens, and Jennifer has a deep history with me. In regard to what the staff member said, as far as the ponds not being changed much, they're being changed considerably, and they will run off into a pond that I own at the bottom of that area, which was impacted when Stonecrest was built. Was considerable sediment runoff affecting the wildlife, trees, and all the things that are there. No one has addressed that. That same stream basin is going to be used for changing those ponds' configuration and putting in different pond status, which could then eventually dry up the pond that I own and enjoy. And I would like you to take that into consideration, as well as the roads.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Denise Weiss in Cavalcino. I'm representing the Stonecrest HOA Division. For the record, there are 59 homes in our subdivision. I have lived there since 2007. I know the property was sold previously to Elstar. I'm representing, which I believe, other communications with Wes Hall, who is our president of the HOA. We have invited to our annual HOA board meeting, which was held on November 3rd at 7:00 p.m. with, we asked for the builder, for the developer to attend, and they had not responded. And our neighborhood, our neighborhood of Stonecrest formally requests that the proposed modifications to the Canterbury development be denied. We want the council of the Towne of Cary to adhere to the original development plan approved for Elstar. The following states why we are against the various modifications. Canterbury Downs has its own entrance onto Davis Drive as connecting to Farm Pond Road and not creating a second entrance will negatively affect and impact Stonecrest and the residents of Farm Pond Road by increasing traffic through our neighborhood, by adding vehicles from an additional 28 homes, increasing in a residential development instead of a secondary uses. By having the second entrance from Canterbury Downs, all construction traffic will utilize Farm Pond Road and Stonecrest entrance, which will reduce the safety of children in our neighborhood, which again has 59 homes. The connection of Grabber Brook to the Canterbury Downs is acceptable once the second entrance into Canterbury Downs is functional and development is complete. The widening of Davis Drive to the new, to the second new entrance in Canterbury Downs should not be granted payment in lieu, as this will be a financial burden on taxpayers of the Towne of Cary. The future, when cost of widening will be more expensive, and the difference will be, have to be made up by Cary. Due to loss of tax revenue caused by laws passed by the North Carolina General Assembly, the financial burdening of widening Davis Drive to the new Canterbury entrance should lie solely on level homes, not the Towne of Cary or the taxpayer. The side street trail on Davis should be constructed, as this should not be a future financial burden on Cary taxpayer. financial burden on Cary taxpayers as well. And also, I'd like to point out where the horse farm was, which was our prior neighbors on Davis Drive, and I believe it was in 2008 or 2009, there was a very severe car accident there. And luckily, the person did survive. A dump truck had run off the road and flattened a brand-new 2008 Honda. If they do not, if they shorten the width from 50 to 30 or 20, whatever they propose, you know, there's going to be 28 homes, and regardless of their statistics, there's kids that live there, there's kids that live at Stonecrest, and all the, you know, we want to encourage children to walk to Davis Drive Elementary, the middle school, and feel safe. If you shorten that buffer zone, who knows what could possibly happen catastrophic, you know, if you don't have the appropriate sidewalks and whatnot in. And we were also under the anticipation that the road that they are still calling Gravel Brook was running right to Farm Pond Road. I've only been in, on the Stonecrest HOA since fall of last year. So prior with Elstar, I'm not sure what all the development request was, but I believe it was presented to our board that it would be connected to Farm Pond Road. It is imperative, Davis Drive, we only have one way in our home, in our Stonecrest subdivision, again, 59 homes. We do have, you know, an ampoules pad, which would be right where their one pond is already existing. I'm unaware of another pond existing there. Yeah, overdone by the law. But in any case, it just, it's just a shame that, you know, we did, we were trying to work with the developer, and, you know, they have not presented anything to Stonecrest. I don't know, even like the other gentleman said, they have, you know, maybe eight homes. Nothing was presented to them either. We're at this meeting, and no one knows what is going on, or who's to say that they won't, in fact, change what their plan, you know, is as well. And we hope that you do truly consider, you know, the fact of it being for the children. You know, we do encourage, you know, future growth, but by not widening Davis Road, you know, it is a major thoroughfare. And we need another, you know, access. I mean, not only the accident, and about last summer, a downed tree took out Davis Drive for over 13 hours. You have, we have no, you know, roundabout, people had to loop back around. I mean, you know, and then is it town of Cary or is it town of Apex? Who's going to, you know, put the, you know, streetlights back together? So, you know, we're on an annex of different towns. I live in Cary. We pay our town, you know, Cary water bill. Our electric is, you know, town of Apex. But we're such on the cusp of this, and it's like, okay, you know, can you, can you, you know, the developer hasn't presented to either any of the Howe residents or the Farm Pond Road residents or the Stonecrest subdivision what the plan is. They're saying that they're going to keep with what our home development is. We have not seen any plans. We cannot ascertain that will happen.
Thank you.
So we do appreciate you listening to our request, and we hope that you take into consideration and that you do not support any of the request and modification request by level homes for Canterbury Downs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers in opposition? And let's please not repeat comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting. The hearing has reached the one-hour time limit.
Thank you.
Hi.
To your left, please.
Can you see me better? Hi, Kim Smith. I'm a resident.
I was up in the audio booth or televising this.
Oh, I'm a resident of Farm Pond Road, and we've seen you several times. I'm not going to repeat anything that's been said already. We, it's already been talked about, the sidewalk, so we'd like to talk or even propose a solution to the sidewalk because it is in your ordinance. And if it's, in fact, the sidewalk has to be made coming between, can we go back to that real quick? To the sidewalk between the two lots that are coming into Farm Pond Road. If the sidewalk has to be made, because I know that I've spoken to someone in regards to that, that once the developer has left, it's probably impossible to get that sidewalk back onto the property. So then it could then join Farm Pond. If it has to be done, we'd like to know if it's possible to come up with a compromise of maybe putting a fence there or putting a gate there so it's not as easy to come onto Farm Pond Road for the reasons that were stated in the first gentleman that spoke, Jim Sherrill, about the coming into the neighborhood because there are ponds, and there's animals, and there's, we have a horse and things like that. So there's no insurance, or we don't have to put other signs on our property. So we'd like to offer that as a solution to maybe having to put the sidewalk there, but then also compromising with the residents of Farm Pond Road.
Thank you. Any others to speak in opposition? Okay. We'll now call on staff to ask for any testimony they wish to add. Oh, first, I'd like to offer cross-examinations of the witnesses in opposition. No, okay. Staff, any additional comments to add?
Yes, we do. And given the predominance of transportation and traffic-related comments, I will turn it over to Jerry Jensen with Transportation Facilities first, and then I will wrap up at the end.
Can I just get one question for clarification first? The sidewalk in question, is that a requirement, or can that be waived?
The sidewalk, the pedestrian connection to Farm Pond Road?
Correct.
The ordinance requires where the connectivity index is waived, that additional pedestrian connections be made from the cul-de-sac to the adjacent subdivisions.
Because of the connectivity?
It is a result of the connectivity index. It's actually a result of two different sections. One is the connectivity index, and one requires where you have a cul-de-sac that backs up to a thoroughfare.
Okay, so, but then, so that triggers this little sidewalk extension thingy?
Correct.
But then we still can't waive that?
Sure you can.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening, counsel. We want to just briefly discuss staff's observations and opinions regarding the minor modifications that are identified as transportation issues. Those modifications are numbered 1, 2, 3, 4, and 7 on the slide in front of you. The applicant is requesting connectivity modifications, which are identified on the map as numbers 1, 2, and 3. The applicant is requesting a reduction in the connectivity index from a required value of 1.2 to 1.0. The applicant is also not extending street stubs in all directions as required by our connectivity ordinance. Staff's observations and opinions are that the applicant's proposal doesn't advance the goals and the objectives of the town's connectivity ordinance. As shown at the location number 2 on the map, extending Crazy Diamond Court to the western property would improve the overall connectivity index to a value of 1.25, which would meet our connectivity ordinance. As shown at location number 3 on the map, Gravel Brook Court could be extended to Farm Pond Road, which would meet the connectivity provision in the ordinance's stub streets in all directions. There are no physical, topographical, or environmental constraints that would prevent these connections from happening. Short trips between existing neighborhoods could be preserved using locally interconnected streets instead of having to directly access heavily traveled thoroughfare such as Davis Drive. I'm trying to get to 87. Kevin's the man. On this slide, it shows that there are very few opportunities for connecting streets in this particular area of town, with the exception of two collector roads like Park Village Drive and Old Jenks Road, but they are spaced a very long distance apart at 1.5 miles. Davis Drive is planned to become a four-lane median-divided roadway at ultimate buildout of the corridor. Median opening spacing of at least 1,200 feet is necessary in order to meet not only the town guidelines, but NCDOT requirements. A planned median opening would be considered at Farm Pond Road. And this particular entrance, the particular entrance at Canterbury would most likely be restricted in some fashion from full vehicular movements, since it falls well short of the 1,200-foot spacing from Farm Pond Road. In this slide, Stonecrest Drive is located to the north, and it's not connected in any manner to Sherwood Green subdivision, which is located to the north. To improve access from both the Canterbury neighborhood as well as the Stonecrest subdivision, this connectivity between the two neighborhoods going to Farm Pond Road is necessary in order to preserve that opinion that if a full median is put in Davis Drive, that the access into Canterbury Drive would become a ride-in, ride-out-only driveway. So having a full movement driveway or access to Farm Pond Drive in the future certainly provides that full movement potential. Wanted to talk briefly about the improvements to Farm Pond Drive as requirements of the land development ordinance. The applicant is requesting a modification from having to widen Farm Pond Road to one-half the required collector street width to include curb gutter and a street-side trail. Rather, they are offering to the town to make a payment-in- lieu option for these types of improvements. This is shown as modification 4 on the map on this particular slide. Staff's observations and opinions are that the applicant's proposal doesn't advance the goals and objectives of the town's construction requirements as outlined in our land development ordinance. There are no physical features, topography, or environmental constraints that would prevent these improvements from being completed. These improvements are necessary in the future in order to advance our comprehensive transportation plan. The roadway improvements will complement the staff's desire to have a local street connection from the proposed development to Farm Pond Road. The payment-in- lieu offered by the applicant reflects the monetary cost of the roadway in terms of today's dollar value. This does, the improvement will cost the town significantly higher dollars in the future due to inflation whenever we would make that improvement. Future residents would also benefit in living in this particular neighborhood, knowing that the roadway is completed now rather than wondering later on whether that particular roadway is ever going to be widened and how that will affect their backyard. Want to talk a little bit about the median in Davis Drive and the modification requested for that. The applicant is requesting a modification to not construct the median in Davis Drive. A median is a requirement of the comprehensive transportation plan, and this is illustrated as number 7 on this particular slide. Staff's observations and opinions again are that the applicant's proposal doesn't advance the goals and objectives of the town's construction requirements as outlined in our land development ordinance. As mentioned earlier, the spacing of the median openings along Davis Drive should be intervals of at least 1,200 feet. The proposed entrance into the subdivision is planned to be located approximately 750 feet north of Farm Pond Road and should technically be restricted to a ride-in, ride-out arrangement since it doesn't meet the median opening spacing requirement. Staff recognizes that there may be some design challenges to construct the full median along the entire subdivision length. However, these particular challenges are primarily related to transitioning the full thoroughfare widening to the existing two-lane pavement to the south of the site. Staff's opinion is that a portion of some median could be constructed from just south of the main entrance into the subdivision all the way to the northern property, or northern boundary line, thus preserving the proposed subdivision entrance to a ride-in, ride-out arrangement. In the event the council elects not to require the median construction now, you may consider having the applicant offer a payment-in- lieu for this construction. Right-of-way and paving in excess of our standard collector street widths are eligible for transportation development fee credits. Therefore, the applicant does not, does have opportunities to recoup eligible thoroughfare expenses for extra thoroughfare widening. One final thought I wanted to leave tonight. During the rezoning of this particular property, some residents along Farm Pond Road expressed safety concerns with the intersection of Farm Pond Road at Davis Drive. To date, we have not received any specific information or proposals from the applicant as to how these safety concerns can be addressed through the development project, particularly if the planned subdivision entrance on Davis Drive is constructed as a ride-in, ride-out entrance. And that concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions as we go along.
Thank you. We'll now ask if anyone sworn in has any objection.
We have two more minor modifications to discuss.
Oh, I thought we went.
He didn't throw it back to me.
All righty. Back to you.
So just to cover the last two fairly quickly, but thoroughly. Davis Drive streetscape is being reduced from 50-foot Type A, which is required by the ordinance, to a 30-foot Type A as proposed by the applicant. Part of the justification is that's consistent with the 30-foot Type A streetscape that was proposed for the Stonecrest subdivision to the north. However, it's important to note there's a couple differences in this streetscape and that. The first being that there's now a requirement for a 10-foot street-side trail, which is meandering further into this streetscape than is typical due to some utility lines. So basically, the entire 10-foot street-side trail and its 20-foot easement are within the 30-foot streetscape they're proposing, which means that there's a roughly 10-foot, and that 10-foot meanders either side of the trails it meanders, left to plant an entire Type A buffer. The applicant did indicate they're proposing a 10-foot planting strip on the rear of the lots. However, from the town's perspective, that does not give the same level of protection to the plant material that you would have if it were in common open space. So from staff's perspective, there's just no way to plant the required, the full required 30-foot Type A streetscape within that remaining area as proposed. And then to go on to the, that's just a zoomed-in view, zoomed-in view of the connection with Stonecrest, you can see the five-foot sidewalk in Stonecrest was located within the right-of-way outside of the streetscape. So there's a full 30-foot with a fence, streetscape provided along their frontage, whereas this trail, like as mentioned earlier, would meander back and forth within the streetscape. It doesn't go into the right-of-way at all. And then finally, to discuss the Champion Trees, there were five on site. You can see four being retained on lots. There will be some impacts, but as we mentioned before with the previous case, those are allowable impacts up to 25% of the critical root zone. The applicant has done fit tests, and they feel confident they can fit houses on those lots and still maintain those trees within that 25%. However, the 1 53-inch oak, which is located in front of the house, is located right on the curb line for the widened Davis Drive, and that tree, if we want Davis Drive widened, would not be feasible for preservation on the site. So that concludes staff's presentation. There's a large number of minor modifications. We'll put this back up when it comes time for the motions. Thank you.
Very good. We'll now ask if anyone sworn in has objections to the competency and, quote, "of any evidence or testimony." Okay, moving on. Does either party believe new evidence has been presented tonight that warrants a continuance of this hearing? Continuing on, we'll now begin the deliberative phase of the hearing. The council members. Somebody's pointing, mayor.
May I? There's a.
Excuse me. Should we have said yes?
No.
New evidence because we weren't given any evidence?
They're not required to provide evidence to surrounding properties, are they, Mr. Silverstein?
Let me make sure I understand your question.
The question was, does either party believe new evidence has been presented tonight that warrants a continuance of this hearing?
And what is your question to me?
And so they were saying they didn't get any information. My question is, is the client required to provide them information?
No.
Who they are required to provide information to?
The town of Cary.
Town of Cary.
And then I think all the information, I know that Kevin had some email correspondence, but I think that the postings on the website indicate that the town staff can be contacted for additional information.
Okay. So now.
I had just two questions of Kevin.
Please.
Kevin, you raised some objection to the streetscape buffer and the trail within it. Would the objections you've raised be resolved if the five-foot sidewalk to the north were continued across the frontage of the applicant's property?
You would be able to provide the plantings required in a 30-foot Type A buffer if the five-foot sidewalk were provided, were continued across the frontage, but then you'd be requesting a waiver to the street-side trails, is my understanding.
I'm, I'm, yes. Thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Counsel, we're now beginning the deliberative phase of the hearing. Comments, questions? If not, we're ready for.
Should you bring up the? Where do we start? Could you bring up the modification list again, please?
The modification list?
It's a law.
I don't know where to start. Mr. Mayor, would you like, I mean, there's, there seems to be, just by looking at the rest of the council members, a lot to discuss on probably a majority of these. Would you like to go through them individually to have counsel discuss them?
According to my guidelines, we have to close the public comment portion before we can go to the necessary motions to go through one at a time. So we're still on public comment. Any additional comments?
Close it.
All right, we're closing it now. Go through them one at a time is what I'd recommend.
Yeah, so the, yeah, one of the ones that I'm considering, I'm having a lot of heartburn with is the Davis Drive streetscape. Mr. Hills, the neighborhood to the north, Stonecrest, that was built in 2000? Sorry?
2004. Three.
Early 2000, 2003 is approximately the timeframe.
So there were different, LDO was different then with the requirements of the streetscape and with requirements of the street-side trail.
My understanding is they requested a reduction to that streetscape. In 2003, the streetscape was still a 50-foot along the thoroughfare, so that was reduced.
But the five-foot trail, not the 10-foot?
Correct. The street-side trail is a new requirement since then.
Okay. I have to say, just from a deliberation perspective and discussion, I'm not, I don't want to get rid of the street-side trail. I have to say, I like the 10-foot. If anything, I think we should be considering down the road improving the five-foot trail to make it a 10-foot trail so that kids have a nice walk from wherever they are south all the way up to Davis Drive middle. So I'm not inclined yet to widen it. If, staff's concern was that if, tell me if I got this right, is that if there was a 10-foot street-side trail and the 20-foot proposed buffer by the applicant, the required or your feeling is that that 20-foot is not enough to have an opaque buffer?
There's a 10-foot multi-use trail within a 20-foot easement, so 20-foot of the 30-foot is taken up with the easement in the trail.
And that's not enough to provide an adequate buffer for the plantings?
That leaves 10-foot to plant a row of shrubs, a row of understore evergreen trees, and canopy trees 20 feet on center, which is probably, especially if you split that either side of the trail, you have five-foot and five-foot.
And it is possible to have a 50-foot, there's nothing impeding a 50-foot streetscape, is there?
Per the applicant, due to the restrictions on the lot size to the west, and I'll let the applicant speak more in detail if you want. If they had to widen that to 50-foot, their statement is they would lose the 12 lots adjacent between the road and Gravel Brook. Is that correct?
I think you break up some.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe if you're going to have this gentleman come back, you probably should reopen the hearing. You've actually closed the hearing.
We actually.
You know what? I'm happy with Mr. Hills responding. Thank you.
So you want to reopen it?
No, she's saying.
No, I'm fine unless somebody, I'd rather try to make our way through.
Sorry. We're bound by this quasi-judicial process. Mr. Hills.
I'll let somebody else. You answer my question. Thank you.
I don't really have questions. I have points I'd like to make, so you want to make them first?
No, ladies first.
Or you go first. It's your district.
Where to start? Kevin, bring up the, Kevin, please, bring up the slide if you can. So we have.
The modification slide.
It's okay. I can wing this, I think. So we have five basic modifications. I don't think a case has been made to reduce the connectivity index from 1.2 to 1. It's clearly been shown by staff that there are no topographical or other kinds of constraints that make creating cul-de-sacs necessary, particularly in looking towards the future side. I don't see the evidence to support that request. The payment in lieu along Farm Pond Road, according to our staff, is insufficient for what it will cost for the town to do those improvements. The connection of the sidewalk going through the buffer, I don't even get that, and I know that's something we're requiring, but, pardon me. I do not support the decrease in the streetscape. Maybe it is 30 feet wide to the north in front of Stonecrest, but it also has different requirements in terms of pedestrian walkway there, so that's difficult to reconcile. The fourth modification is about removal of the champion tree. Believe it or not, Ed, I'm okay with that one. But the fifth one about the Davis Drive median and no construction and no payment in lieu for the median, you know, I heard some disagreement between the two engineers, traffic engineers, our Jerry Jensen and the nice traffic engineer from the applicant about the national standards for tapering and how much of a median you can put in, and I just heard a difference of opinion about that, that I'm not sure who's right and who's wrong. There was comments about the ash-toe standards about road widening and tapering and the median in and out and the safety features of that, but the bottom line to me is who pays for it? And the truth is that everybody, that railroad's been there for, how long? Everybody knows that railroad's there, and everybody knows that the street improvements would have to be done on the other side of the road.
Right.
That's a given. So now being asked to make changes simply because the railroads across the street seems like not the right thing to do.
I would agree with most everything you said except connectivity.
Well, you have to disagree with something, Don. Just come on.
That's what gets me up in the morning.
That's right. You're going to miss me.
To me, the connectivity, it does honor the discussions and the work and stuff that took place back with the neighbors and the residents of Farm Pond Road. I mean, I think while we may not have been thrilled about it, this was one of those cases where the applicant and the property owners and neighbors worked together and came up with something that everybody could be satisfied with. So for that alone, I support the waiver and connectivity. I would totally be fine with waiving that little sidewalk. I think that makes no sense, putting a sidewalk between two homes that goes to no sidewalk.
Right.
I can understand the residents' concerns there. Totally support the waiver and connectivity that goes to the back of a barn or something. I mean, that doesn't make any sense whatsoever. I do think the applicant, previous and/or current, made good efforts to work with the surrounding community and those most directly impacted by this. What the kicker for me is the Davis Drive streetscape. Overall, I actually applaud them for the amount of champion trees they're saving. They're, you know, putting houses on lots without removing the champion tree. That's pretty impressive, in my opinion. But a 30-foot streetscape on Davis Drive, one of Cary's, you know, major roads with a sidewalk going through the middle of it, which will have no plantings, so the homeowners will wreck some fence, that they're not going to care what the side looks like on Davis Drive, they're going to care what the side looks like in their backyard. It'll be neglected. The town will end up having to take it over and take care of it, and that's just not Cary standards, it's just not the Cary way. So I don't know that I'd want to kill this tonight. I think there's work that could be done. I think there's still a shot that we could make some improvements and tweaks on this and then come up with something that everybody could be satisfied with, but if it's going to be a 30-foot streetscape with a 10-foot trail going through the middle of it, I'm not voting for it.
Ms. Hill, I have questions. I'm going to get at the connectivity when I frame my questions.
That's fine. I'll call Jerry.
Farm Pond Road serves residents that are in the county?
Yes.
And whose ETJ do they belong to?
That ultimately north of Farm Pond, that Farm Pond and continuing over to Howe would be our ETJ.
Okay. And do we have that since it's in our ETJ in our land use plan?
Yes.
And what would be the density on the land use plan?
Same as here, low density.
Low density.
So it goes all the way across the continuation of Farm Pond.
So maximum number of units and, and I have, sorry, I haven't done the math. How many acreages there, maximum number of units?
It's, low density would be, you talking about on the project tonight?
So maximum of three times however many acres that is.
You talking about on the site tonight? It's 15 acres.
No, 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 no. The potential future development, whether it be 100 years, 200 years.
I don't have that acreage, but yeah, it'd be up to three units per acre under the current land use plan.
And guess at the acreage?
The site under consideration tonight is 15 acres, so it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 or so. Eyeballing it.
25 acres, so we're talking 75 potential homes. That's what bothers me about the connectivity. We're not talking about tonight. We're talking about the future, and if you cut it off now, what's going to be the future when these potential property owners, you know, 100 years from now are not here? And who has that property then? And what are they going to do with it then? The whole landscape changes then, but you have cut it off today, you know, that kind of thing. That's what worries me about it. Anyway, that's in addition to the comments you made.
Well, I would just like to support that in saying that our ordinances are in place not to benefit at the moment, but to create the benefit long-term, and we can see dozens and dozens of cases where stubs went into places that were illogical, but over time they became essential stubs to essential roads. We see road widens, I mean, I think of Morrisville Parkway. That road sat disconnected for at least, what, 10, 12, 15 years, but fully put in four lanes with a median completely by Preston Village, and it sat there unused until it could be connected on the ends, and now it is a major road. So I am opposed, please put the modification page back up, I'm opposed to a waiver in anything that has to do with the street width, median, streetscape. I'm also opposed to anything that has to do with not putting in, either giving us an ample payment in lieu for the widening and curb gutter and sidewalk for Farm Pond Road or the construction of that road. I think it's shortsighted of us to accept anything less. The one thing I'm okay with on this entire thing is the removal of that champion tree. And I just, I have to say this, the applicant had to have known the restrictions on the land when he purchased this or went under contract. He had to know CSX was there and that the road widening was going to impact him. And so when a person goes under contract on land, he does it with knowledge of what his constraints are, not with the hope that he could be exempted from all of our requirements. So I think this is wrong, and I think it's wrong to put houses so close to the road. I think that's very wrong. I don't like that reduction at all.
A lot of concerns, objections. Mr. Smith, do you have anything to add? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So we, not sure we have a motion for a separate. Oh, here we go. For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve minor modification requests regarding the removal of champion trees made by the applicant as the request met all the approved criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Motion carries.
Okay, so next up, if I can find it. For the reasons discussed, I move that we deny the proposed subdivision plan as it does not meet all of the approval criteria set forth in section 3.9. Here comes Lisa. I can see her out of my peripheral vision. Aye of the LDO. What did I do wrong?
We've got to address the other modifications.
So we have to actually vote them down?
Yes, so if you would make, take an actual vote.
I'd be happy to do that.
Can we do them all at one time?
We can do the others.
Sure.
All but. Do I need to withdraw my motion and say?
No, because you approved that.
Just deny the remaining one.
Okay. Since we all know what those are.
And I will ask, before you do that, the applicant's attorney has asked if there's an opportunity to table or continue, so I'll let him come and speak to that if you're willing to hear that.
I'm going to make my motion, and if it fails, then somebody can make a motion to table or continue if they want to. For the reason, let's see here. For the reasons discussed, I move that we deny the other modification requests made by the applicant as they do not meet all of the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and by other you mean all criteria except the champion tree.
All those except the champion tree. And I, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just going to say, if that's confusing, I'm happy to withdraw my first motion.
My question's for clarification. Is this the same as a rezoning or other applications that come before us that if they are denied, there is a one-year waiting period?
There's a one-year waiting period that council could waive if they so choose through separate process at a legislative hearing.
If the new proposal is substantively different.
It's substantively different, correct.
Right.
Okay, so we still have the authority to waive that?
Correct.
So there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Motion carries unanimously.
So there you go.
And you do still have to do the.
Oh, yes.
Motion for the subdivision plan.
So wouldn't you know? Hang on one second. I bet you I can find it real fast. Okay. For the reasons discussed, I move that we deny the proposed subdivision plan as it does not meet all of the approval criteria set forth in section 3.9.2, aye of the LDO.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Motion carries unanimously. And I believe that wraps this one up. Thank everyone for adhering to the quasi-judicial guidelines, although they're very difficult to understand. Is there a motion to adjourn, oh, I close this public hearing, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Motion carries.
This has been a production of Cary TV. Visit the Town of Cary website at townofcary.org.